Blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We acknowledge and appreciate that self-representation for this democratic republic is a privilege that is enjoyed by far too many. Father, provide us divine guidance so we may do well and so that we may use our blessing wisely and in a way which will preserve and enhance the city of Madeira Beach. This we ask for your greater glory. Amen.
Yes. Mayor Black.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Douthat.
Present.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. We do have one item to add, and that goes... I'm sorry. Let's see. Oh, it's under new business. It'll be item, which is number 10, and it will be item H, and it is to discuss a zoning issue with one of our residents. With one of our residents.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we move the city manager job posting and review and selection to the... after public comment. This is by far the most pressing issue in the city right now, and the board hasn't discussed this publicly, and I think all of our constituents deserve the right to hear what our thoughts are on this and see what direction we're going. I'd have to wait five hours through this meeting in order to do so. So I make a motion to move it up right after public comment.
Does anyone have any objections to that?
No. Hey Doug, could I ask that we do these proclamations first and then do it after that?
After public comment.
Okay.
So after public comment, we'll do the city manager job description before the consent agenda. All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
No, first we need to...
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat.
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Black.
Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have three proclamations this evening. The first one is for the National Safe Voting Week, and I would like to ask Joseph Prumish, Charles Lambeth, and Sam Hanna to approach the podium. And also, I would like to, once again, thank Deb Lera, Mayor, for stepping up to the plate, because that's a big job running the Public Works and the Marina, and she's doing a great job. Thanks. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, Keep Pinellas Beautiful.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission and staff. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and recognize, number one, our Director of Keep Pinellas Beautiful, Pat DePlasco. But before we get into our presentation of awards, I just want to say that we have a group in Madeira Beach that live on East Madeira, Candy Maiden and Audrey Seaver and their husbands, and then also neighbor Roger and Suzie, who have gotten together and have created the Madeira Beach Community Cleanup, hashtag trash pirates. So every day, you probably see Candy out on the street with her five-gallon bucket, picking up trash from the Brown Boxer down to Gulf Boulevard and then back up Madeira Way, excuse me, and over by Archibald Park also. They're great community leaders. They're fabulous. They've had over 60 volunteers at each of their cleanups, which is always the first Saturday of the month. We will be having our next cleanup on June 1st. July 4th is a big, obviously, a very, very big event for us at the beach. We will have a cleanup on the 5th, which is Friday. We will be working, and then their cleanup is also on Saturday. So we will have many opportunities for people to come out and actually help us clean the beach. We've had a lot of involvement from the community and even outside the community. We actually have people coming down from Tarbin Springs and Palm Harbor to help us clean our beaches. Now, we do not just the beaches. We do Gulf Boulevard, the parks, Rock Park Recreation. We go playgrounds and mangroves. Marilyn Halfling came back with three bags from the mangroves just from the bridge to Causeway Park, and the only reason she came back is because she ran out of bags. I'm not sure how long she would have been there. But with that, I would like to introduce Pat DePlasco. She's the Director for Keep Pinellas Beautiful, and we support her not only with volunteers but also monetarily. So this is Pat.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deb. Good evening. How are you this evening? I... as I said, my name is Pat DePlasco, and I am the Executive Director with Keep Pinellas Beautiful. But I just wanted to briefly talk about our partnership. Deb has been partnering with Keep Pinellas Beautiful for, I think, since we began back in 1992. What our organization does is we help engage community members to take the responsibility of keeping their communities clean and green. And what we do... how we do that is, we only have six employees. We're a part... you know, we have a small office, but we work with over 18,000 volunteers a year. And how we do that is we partner with people like Deb, people like the, you know, cities like the city of Madeira Beach, and we help coordinate and assimilate the community members into the projects. So it's been a wonderful pleasure working with you, and I want to say thank you so much for supporting the Great American Cleanup this year. You were one of our sponsors, and you are proudly on the back of our T-shirt, and we very... we very much appreciate it. The Great American Cleanup is the Keep America Beautiful signature event. Nationally, from March 1st through May 31st, there are... or, excuse me, June 31st, there are activities going on all across the country, engaging the community members into cleaning their place that they call home. So I'm really, really excited. Do you remember the Crying Indian? Do you remember back in the '70s, the commercial on TV? Remember? That was the Keep America Beautiful... that was like the kickoff of when they started doing their educational campaign. And in 1972, I saw that Indian, and I was inspired. I was 12 years old. I'm showing how old I am now. But I was... and I got involved with Great Keep America Beautiful from that point and have lived this passion my entire life. So it's something that... the community engagement is something that we really, truly treasure, and I wanted to help today recognize the great support that we've had with the city of Madeira Beach. We have a number of groups that have participated in the Great American Cleanup and have really made a tremendous impact. By the way, throughout the county, so far, we're not completed with the Great American Cleanup as of yet, but so far, we worked with over 5,000 volunteers since March 1st through now, and we've done over 150 community improvement projects. And that's all through the power of our volunteer service. The first group we'd like to recognize, and this award says, this certificate is awarded to Crossbridge Church on this 13th day of May 2019, and Keep Pinellas Beautiful would like to thank you for your outstanding contribution to the 2019 Great American Cleanup. Your dedication is the foundation for our success. So we have... There you go. The next group is the Madeira... Ken, is it all right if I turn?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. The next group is the Madeira Beach Fire Department. Are we here today? No? Okay, well, Deb will... we'll take that one. The other group is Engel and Voker's Realty. And one here? Okay, and there's two of them here. Northside Fellowship of Christian Athletics or Athletes. I hear that you guys did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And you're coming up... thank you so much. Thank you so much. There you go. Okay, come over on this side. You can come on this side, too. One more, ready, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much for your help. Stetson's Environmental Law Program. And Candy Maiden and Audrey Cleaver. Now, they're, as Deb mentioned a few minutes ago, they are the founders of the Trash Pirates. And I think that's a great name, you know, because what do they want to do? They want to clean up after the messy mess that the partyors make. But this is absolutely wonderful, and they're not here, so you'll share that with them. They're out picking up trash. And the last... the last award, this is to certify our level of appreciation to the city of Madeira Beach. And I'd like to present this. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your support. We can't do it alone, and...
Together. Our motto is, "Together, we will keep Pinellas beautiful." Thank you.
And I also want to thank the Snack Shack. Laurie always is a great host for us, and we really appreciate having a place for us to go. Doug's a big supporter. Debbie Weinstein's a big supporter. I've seen Nancy. I've seen all the Commissioners, Jonathan. Everybody's been there at least once or twice, so we really appreciate the community support.
Thank you. By the way, before I forget, June 13th is our annual awards and recognition luncheon, and you are all invited to attend. I will make sure the invitation gets to you through Deb. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do to keep our city and our beaches clean.
Thank you.
And everyone else who participates. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Please... what... excuse me. I just want to give the rules. The rules are you have three minutes to speak. It's on anything that's not on the agenda, and please speak directly into the microphone, give your full name and address, and please remember to be civil and respectful. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Rockowitz. I reside at 14190 West Parsley. Appreciate it. First of all, I've been on Madeira Beach for 20 years, bought and sold one house and fixed up... bought another house, completely tore it down myself, did an owner-contractor FEMA-compliant 3,000-square-foot home, never had a code violation, never had a red tag. The reason I'm here is we're attempting to install a backup generator that we've been going back and forth, and I've already applied for permit. I made it through zoning and FEMA and all that, and I've got turned down by the inspector. Don't understand why, again. In the meantime, the city has put a lien on my home, which I understand that, but what's become a much greater burden is they've also blanket-leaned another piece of property that I'm only a 25% holder that my grandmother left when she passed away. We are trying to sell that home. We cannot sell that home because of this lien. I've gotten the city manager, kind of got him, get his advice, and he's also kind of gotten involved and spoke to Frank, and I think we're, excuse me, very close to getting the permit applied for and issued, but it's just, we wouldn't be in this situation, which all I'm trying to do is become code compliant. And I apologize for where we're at right now, but, you know, it's like I've been fought the entire way, and I'm just trying to... right here mostly is, this lien has become the biggest problem right now, this blanket lien. I know probably won't be able to do anything today, but, I mean, is there anything... I'm trying to get that lien either taken off the other property, and then, once we get the permit applied, which probably will be in the next day or two, is to forgive or, you know, release all the other liens on the described property where I live. And that's what I'm here to do.
City Attorney, do you have any comments on that?
Well, first, you'd have to bring the property into compliance and get a certificate of compliance from the code enforcement. Sounds like you need to get a building permit issued by the building official. Then there's a formal process where you can request a reduction in lien by preparing a letter request to the city council. It would be noticed and heard at that time. You would have to have all the documentation regarding it so that the council can review it. We did have a lien reduction last year. Not all the Commissioners were in favor of it. It's important that they have all the information in front of them and all the facts and paperwork that they can review.
Yeah. I mean, this lien is about 30 days old only, so it's not like we're deep into it, but, I mean, the lien is the problem on the other properties. Is there a way to...
Code enforcement, if there's a lien against you for code enforcement, it goes against not only that property but any other properties you own, even in other... even in other counties.
But it doesn't have to be that way. There's two ways to word it, and they worded it as far as a blanket.
I think that it's within the discretion of code enforcement, and they'd like to make sure that the properties are brought into compliance and that the liens are paid.
Mr. Commissioner, did you have anything to help out with this, you know, since you've been kind of involved?
Madam Mayor, I had an opportunity to speak with the property owner concerning the issue that he expressed to the board, and I believe that we're fairly close to getting that property into compliance. The order by the special magistrate was to obtain a building permit. Once that is done, that effectively will cure the issue. The big thing for us is compliance. I don't think the city has incurred any hard costs associated with the particular property, so following the attorney's train of thought, once we receive the appropriate documentation, we can then bring it forward with a staff memorandum to cure the liens that have been accruing on that particular property. But I would envision that a permit should be issued on the property here, probably within the next 24 to 48 hours.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. Before you tell me, "No, I can't talk about this," I'm not talking about recruitment for a new city manager. I'm talking about our current city manager. I said, "Before you say, 'No, don't talk about that,'" I'm not talking about recruitment of a city manager. I'm talking about our current city manager. His hiring started for multiple reasons, but his actual hiring started by recommendation by a gentleman he worked with back in Largo or Pinellas, and that was Walter Pierce, and said that we had to hire him or we're going to lose this opportunity. And I don't know if you all remember that, but that's what he said. Mr. Evans has multiple titles. He's got MPA, MBA, ICMA, CM, but I truly believe that we need to add things like scammer, liar, user of city, because he was in the process of working to get back to Riviera Beach from the very beginning. This wasn't a later movement. This is something that he has been working on. So his head has not always been in the city of Madeira Beach. It has been someplace else, and that's totally wrong. That's evident by him having a contract in the city of Riviera Beach. I think that's despicable personally. I think it's absolutely wrong. So we lose all this... So we lose all this time of having a city manager that really hasn't accomplished anything. Where's the grants? Where's the money that has come in for things for the city that we need? We haven't gotten anything. So that's what I'm really upset about. And I'm also actually glad that he's leaving because we will become a city again instead of an agency. We are city of Madera Beach, not an agency of Madera Beach. So I'm looking forward to that personally. The other thing is, the Madera Beach website is still horrific to try to get through and get information. I don't know what our person does, but it's difficult. We should be able to punch any day of the week on there and find out what's going on that day in the city, whatever. Thank you.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madera Beach. Y'all are actually going to love this one because it's no pressure. A gentleman talked to me about the parking at Archibald. He's not a resident of Madera Beach. He parked his motorcycle, I think, by the restrooms and went in to ask where he could park his motorcycle. And the lady that manages the Snack Shack came out with him. She was going to, I guess, see if he could park where he was. And already, he was getting a ticket. And before, so before he could even move his bike to where it was supposed to be, he had a ticket. And the gentleman doing the ticketing wouldn't pull it back so that he could park where he was supposed to. He was simply walking in to find out where he should park his motorcycle. He didn't know if there was motorcycle parking, if that spot was okay. So I, you know, we need to, we are a tourist town. This was basically a tourist, someone that didn't, doesn't live here in Madera Beach that this happened to. On top of this, getting this ticket, he came to City Hall to pay the ticket, $25, only to find when he got here, he was told he has to mail his payment to New York City. So I was wondering if there was any way, just as a goodwill gesture, we could help this gentleman out. He wasn't going in there to try to get away with not paying for parking. He, and you can verify this, if you like, the lady sitting here, that he came in to talk to, to ask about where he could park his motorcycle or if that was the right spot. So if you will, whoever needs to, Walt, I don't know if that's you or Jonathan, get with me and I can get with the gentleman. See if we can help out someone that lives near here but doesn't live in Madera Beach. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Christina Lockhart Wells, 550 Normandy Road. We have on 140th, the bricks that go across the road, it seems to be like pedestrian, like crosswalks. I'm not really sure whether or not that's the designation for them. But if it is, it would be nice if there was signage for them. I do walk my dogs, or my dog, and I do use them as a walkway. But I get kind of honked at. And people get irritated. But it would be nice to know whether or not they are an actual designated pedestrian walkway. It does seem like they are. I mean, they are across all of the streets along 140th. But there are a few going, you know, along 140th, not just on the cross streets, but along, you know, parallel 140th. But it would be nice to know whether or not they're actually, you know, there. The other thing, where you have the doggy bags hanging for people to use, there are no trash cans. So you provide the actual, you know, poo bags, but you don't provide trash cans for people to put them in. So it would be nice if, you know, the city provided a receptacle for people, rather than having to carry them around, you know, for, I walk my dog three miles. So, and he goes more than once. So I have three bags that I carry for three miles. You know, if I take a bag or, you know, you, it would be nice if you had, where you have the bags hanging, an actual garbage can. I don't know whether or not that's a possibility. You know, I would be glad to purchase a, if you guys wanted to chain it up, I would be more than happy to purchase a garbage can if that's what it takes. But yeah, I don't know whether the city can provide one. I'd provide one, but if that's what it takes to get it done. But it would be nice to have, if you guys, I mean, it's great that you guys provide the poo bags, but we need somewhere to put the poo. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the city manager job description, job posting review and selection and discussion.
Madam Mayor, before I get into the presentation, I do want to correct the record as to what one of the speakers said. This is the first entity that I have ever worked with that, or first agency I've ever worked with, that Director Pierce and I have worked together. We've never worked together in any other capacity in any other municipal corporation or consulting firm or anything like that. So I do want to correct the record. Nonetheless, the item before you this evening is to proceed forward with the executive recruitment process for the position of city manager. Staff has attached the job description for your review and is requesting direction on how the board wishes to proceed. The city manager's current last day is scheduled to be July 9th at the conclusion of the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We have discussed internally some options that we would look for the board to consider about posting the position on multiple websites that are suitable for this type of position. Also, if it is the board's pleasure, we can discuss the feasibility of engaging the senior advisors through the Florida City County Management Associations to assist in interim capacity. The board can also consider an interim appointment from internal staff or even someone from the outside. The schedule that you have provided in the memorandum is a pretty aggressive schedule. And I will go ahead and walk the board through that. With your blessings, we would look to post the position on Friday and begin accepting applications and resumes. Our intent is to keep the position posted and accepting resumes and applications till June 11th. If the candidates are qualified and meets the qualifications that the board will specify as part of the job description, we would look to have the board host in, or host face-to-face public interviews on June 25th. And then look to have the board come back and shortlist their candidates on June 26th. After that particular session, then I would encourage the board to direct the city attorney to proceed forward with the contract negotiations and looking to approve a contract and have that before the board at your July 9th meeting. I anticipate that, once this position is posted, that we would be able to get a good number of candidates within probably the first two weeks for the board to consider. And so staff is requesting direction as to how the board wishes to proceed. If you would like to make any modifications to the job descriptions, modifications to the recruitment schedule, or discuss any other aspects associated with the recruitment and selection process for the city manager. And staff stands prepared to answer any questions the board may have.
Madam Mayor, I did have one thing. I'm not available on June 26th, when you would do the regular special, or the special meeting to select. I am available on the 25th. I might suggest that you could combine the 25th and the 26th into one meeting where you would interview the candidates, the top five on the 25th, and then give direction and rank those at that same meeting on the 25th. You'd have to change it from a workshop meeting to a regular, a special meeting for the selection of city managers. There's really no need for you to come back the second day. You can do it all that first night.
The, and the intent behind the separation of a day is to allow for the board to go back, take an opportunity to think about what each and every candidate had to say, even discussions with your constituents on their perspective of the candidates, and come back the next day with a recommendation as to how you wish to proceed. But if the board would like to consolidate that all in one day, you can certainly do so. The rationale behind that was to give you some opportunity to reflect on the day's long interview process that we would encourage you to entertain.
I agree with city manager that I don't think we should combine those two because we do need some time to think it over and decide, you know, decide what's really the best thing or way to go forward.
I was going to ask, city attorney, when, what day are you not available?
Well, I'll be there the 25th or the 26th. I can get a substitute. If you need someone to be there, you'll be choosing from among your top five.
Could we do it on the 27th?
I'm not sure that I have to be there for that. I could still negotiate the contract after that, once you tell me who to negotiate with.
Could you do it on the 27th?
I'm out the 26th, 27th, 28th first.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, what I- That's why I suggested the 25th, but you don't probably need me to be there for that.
If I may, Madam Mayor, what I would recommend that is if you kept the date as the 26th, you can rank the candidates 1, 2, or 3, and then direct the city attorney to commence a negotiation with the number one candidate. If for whatever reason the number one candidate drops out, then the attorney can, you know, decide to, if it's the board's pleasure, to move to number two or, you know, repost the position, whatever the board's pleasure is.
I've got a few things to add. Claire, can you hand these out real quick?
How do you feel about combining the dates or not, though?
Oh, I, you know, I think the schedule's not aggressive enough. And I'll chat with you here in a second.
All right, thank you.
You know, I'm sure, this past week, a letter that I sent to the city manager about a month ago ended up in your inboxes. And it's where I'm asking Mr. Evans for his resignation about a month ago. You know, we were elected by this community to be leaders. And we've let this man publicly negotiate a contract right in front of our eyes. And we're still considering letting him stick around for another 60 days. Guys, this is a business, okay? He made his choice. We need to make ours. I don't know if anybody, if we've accepted his resignation. And, you know, my opinion would be that we accept his resignation effective immediately, and let's get on with our lives. Look at that top page. He's been negotiating, and he's been talking to his friends in Riviera Beach for months now. The entire board is, I've, and I've done my due diligence. His friends were campaigning, look at this. His friends were campaigning back in January, talking about bringing him back. I've watched these Riviera Beach meetings. And the entire time they've discussed, you know, not only the new board, but the interim city manager, his former assistant. They've sat on the dais, stating, admitting that they've been discussing his return for the past couple of months. And also, and I quote, you know, they were saying he definitely wants to come back. Sounds like everybody's already spoken to him. Why do we even have to meet with him again? Look at the second thing I handed you guys. You know, you guys didn't see this letter, I don't think. If you read it, I asked the city manager and Claire to get it out to you. This was before we had that parliamentary meeting the other day in the Sunshine Law. This was a blatant disregard of how to handle recruitment and bringing a person in. If you look at Chaz's file, we completely skipped the vetting process on this. I went and found this in five minutes. I went to the city of Largo, just because I thought it was really odd that a person who'd been there 18 years, all of a sudden decided to get up and leave. He listed as his two references, Jonathan and Chief O'Neil. Okay, so you're telling me that our last two-
Point of order.
I'm sorry?
Point of order, please.
We're talking about-
Will the city attorney please advise if we are talking germane to the exact subject of the requirements and the processing of the resignation of the city manager?
I think the point of orders can be directed to the chair of the meeting.
Pardon me, I'd like to say that the information that is being presented by Commissioner Andrews is not germane to the material that we are reviewing to proceed, to move forth with the resignation and with the requirements. So thank you very much.
Okay, you're actually correct, Commissioner Weinstein. I asked the city clerk to expand the definition of this. And I was told I would be able to speak to this. We have not made a decision as a board on whether or not we are going to let him work out his 60 days or you're expecting, or accepting his resignation immediately. That is the paramount issue right now. We have to decide on that first before we decide on anything about how we're pushing forward to fill the position. I am pointing out a few reasons why I personally think we should end this relationship right now and get on with our lives. You know, like I said, I will make a motion, if you'd like, that we accept his resignation and immediately. And then, once we do that, then we can move on to the task at hand as far as finding another city manager or appointing an interim city manager in the meantime. But there were other things I wanted to talk about. But I mean, if you want to, if you don't think this is germane to the conversation, this is certainly germane to the conversation. This is the conversation. Well, Commissioner Weinstein, then let me ask you. Do you think he should remain city manager? Well, when can I talk to you, Commissioner?
You can add, you can-
This is, this is the time when I can speak to you. I am asking you a question. Do you think, after what we have been put through, that we should be subjected to him staying for another 60 days? Or should we get on with the business of going about our business? We're going to ask a city manager, a new city manager, to come in here and work under somebody else's budget? We need to get this city manager in here right away so they can work on a budget for next year, okay? Because if we don't, and if he accepts the budget of a lame duck city manager, he's not going to have his own budget until October, he's not going to start his own budget until October of 2020. It is important that we get on the ball and get going on this. We could have this knocked out in a month, and then we could start our budget proceedings. And we, it's going to take us, you know, we're going to have to come day after day in order to get it done, but we can do it. But I don't see any reason why this city manager should have any insight into our budget proceedings going forward or any decisions. Why should he be able to hire somebody that he's not even be able to manage after a couple of months? So I do believe this is germane to the conversation.
Well, sir, then I would suggest that you make your motion.
Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner Andrews, can I say something? Originally, I was, I felt we were going to have a chance to kind of get together and talk privately, one-on-one with the city manager. My question is, I know there's some items that you started and you wanted to complete. What I'd like to know are the items, what are the items that need to be taken care of at this time? Is there anything you can provide in that direction?
Madam Vice Mayor, there's a list of a lot of items that staff has in the queue for at least the next 60 to 75 days. My intent is to bring those items to a close and then assist in the process of transitioning what projects and policy items that the board has discussed. Most importantly, we have a $15 million capital plan that we're bringing forward that will have a lasting impact on the city. And so we've been working on addressing those things. have a lasting impact on the city, and so we've been working on addressing those things. We still have the second phase of the compensation and classification. We still have some items that need to come before the board and the budget committee as it relates to health insurance, workers' comp. So there's an abundant amount of things that we are trying to work on, revising the city's personnel manual that is in desperate need of being corrected and addressed in the appropriate fashion. So there's a lot of substantive public policy items that, that need to come before this, this board for consideration. I, I do wanna take the opportunity, though, to communicate that, for those that have watched the situation over in Riviera Beach, yes, I do have friends in Riviera Beach, I do have people that care very dearly about me, but the campaign literature that has my name, that is information that people have put out since I left that organization. Secondly, the item that was presented to you by Commissioner Andrews with respect to Mr. Jordan, I did provide a response as to the normal HR practices were followed, but the charter clearly stipulates that an interference from an elected official going in and demanding the resignation or removal of an employee is inconsistent with the charter. This particular item, and the HR coordinators here can attest to it, it was something that did not come up in the background check. When we called the city of Largo and asked for additional information, we had to ask the same question in three different ways to be able to obtain the information from the HR director. As soon as the information was provided to us, we took care of that situation within 48 hours, so the situation was remedied once the information became available to us. The individual did not state that they were let go with regards to that. If you look at the application, it never communicated that. The other side of it is, we wanted to make sure that we parted ways in a fashion that was in the best interest of the city. So we resolved the issue. It had nothing to do with some of the information that was provided in here, because some of it, when it says violating a city policy, and there was no additional information that was attached, violating the city policy is as simple as getting a speeding ticket. However, once we found out the nature and the salacious nature of the items, we addressed it expeditiously, so it was not something that was, fell on deaf ears, and we didn't react as an organization. So staff has, we have documentations, the HR coordinator can communicate that to yourself. We use a third-party vendor. It was not outside of any other process that, that we went through as an organization. So nonetheless, we have some other projects and initiatives and things that I would like to bring to closure, to be able to provide for a smooth transition for whomever the next administrator would be.
Are, are you kidding me? Did you just say that out loud? You, you found that information about Mr. Jordan? You did, not me.
Did I say that?
Yeah, that's exactly what you said. You said that Karen found the information about Mr. Jordan.
I said, in the information that Karen obtained-
No, where did Karen obtain the information from?
Commissioner, if I can finish-
Yeah, you have finished.
Mayor, if you could please restore order so that there's one person talking at the time, and one's allowed to finish their questions and answers. We deter, we retain civility in the meeting.
The information that we obtained was a resignation, and it was just this form. There was one form. The additional form that you went over and did your own investigation at the city of Largo produced this. You provided this letter to the clerk and asked for it to be placed in the box of the elected officials. You, at no time, never presented this information to me. It was provided to me by the clerk. As soon as we got this information, we then did additional exploratory research and obtained the information by doing a public records request from the city of Largo to get the nature of the text messages. That was kept in a separate file that was not provided to us in the first background check.
So apparently, I have to do your work for you.
No, actually-
Apparently, I did.
The charter really specifies the roles and responsibilities as it relates to administrative functions, and Commissioner, that is an administrative function. If you had heartburn with it, you could have communicated it to me directly.
Oh, I did.
No, you did not, sir.
I wrote you a letter.
No, you did not, sir.
I'm sorry, read the letter.
You, you provided this to Clara. You did not provide it to me. You put my name on it, but you did-
And Clara handed it to you.
You did not provide it to me.
Does it really matter?
Exactly. That's what he's saying. He's saying I didn't provide him the information. The information's sitting right here, okay?
Does it really matter who provided the information?
It really matters that we can accomplish everything that we need to accomplish that he just laid out for us. Is he really gonna bring up the, the salary survey? The salary survey, you know what that salary survey said? That in the past two years, under his presiding over this, 60, we lost 60% of our people in 2017, and, and we applauded the fact that we only lost 30% of the people in 2018. 90% of our staff has left. 90% of our staff has left. We don't need him to complete these projects.
90% of our staff have left.
Did you read it? You wanna, you wanna read it?
Not right now, thank you.
Well, you got it handed to you. You should be doing the research by yourself, Maggie. I, I just, I'm making a motion that we-
I'm gonna tell you-
I'm making a motion that we accept his resignation effective immediately.
Point of order. Just go back to your motion. Thank you, sir.
I just did it.
Commissioner Andrews, may I ask you a question? Would this be better to go ahead and just put it on a separate meeting by itself? We've got all this information to read, things to go over, and everyone be on the same page together. If we could maybe schedule just this one meeting, a special meeting, to do nothing but discuss the city manager and the process we need to follow through? Would you be willing to go ahead and-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, I asked for that in my letter to, to you all, in the letter that you got in your boxes the other day. I asked for the mayor to call a special meeting, 'cause I found out I'm not allowed to do that. So I have, I have asked for that. I've have asked for a special meeting three weeks ago, so.
Because I feel there's still a lot of citizens that might, you know, be interested in coming to the meeting also. So if there's one evening when it's available for all of us to sit down and maybe have a special meeting and just talk only on this subject and see what we can accomplish, like I said, there's a lot of information, like we just got some information here, and there's other things. I, I don't wanna rush through this and just fill the seat when Jonathan leaves. I think we need to really concentrate, 'cause this is a very important position with our city, and I think we need to take the time to go over everything we have, to put the right person in place.
That's what we'll be doing, and that's why it doesn't make sense to terminate him immediately, because we have a lot of work to do to, to find a new city manager, and we, you know, we need some kind of leadership, whether or not you think he's the best leader or not, it's not the question right now. He is our leader.
He's our leader that lied to you. He lied to you, okay? He quit on you, okay? That's what he did. That is your leader, okay? For me, I can't accept that. I, that, you know what? In corporate America, you, you resign, you get shown the door. That's what happens, and that's, we, we are running a business here. I mean, you guys wanna keep him for another 60 days? Have at it. I mean, I just, I really can't understand it. I, I think that we should start our search immediately, get somebody in here that can approve a budget, that they get to run. It's going to be their budget. He shouldn't be approving a budget for somebody else. I want a Madeira Beach leader running Madeira Beach, not a Riviera Beach guy. Do you guys know he has a consulting contract with Riviera Beach right now? And we're still paying him full pay here.
Madam Mayor, if, if I may, I'm at the point where I'm sick and tired of this commissioner continuing to impugn my character in the provision of the contract. If you read the contract, Commissioner, it says that I could serve as a consultant, and if you read my existing employment contract, it would require approval from this board. I have not asked this board for that approval. So, again, you continue to manipulate and move things that are not correct.
All right. We have a motion on the table.
You know, I would just like to kind of say a couple of things. Number one, number one, in the package he gave out is an email from Elaine Poe to me, but I never responded to Elaine Poe, so I don't know why in the hell it's in here, you know? Doug, you've never gotten emails that you have not responded to? Never in your life?
John, look at the email. You've done everything on that list. You've done everything on that list.
Why don't you just answer my question? Yes or no?
Of course, but I, but I-
And I have not answered, I never answered this.
You did. You answered it by doing it.
Point of order.
Second off, I would like to say, many people, when Maggie and Nancy Oakley and myself got elected, not many people, some people came here and said, you have an agenda, you have an agenda. Doug, you've walked into here with an agenda, both to get rid of Jonathan and probably the, the fire chief. So you have your agenda, just like you said we had ours, you know? So I don't see any difference in that.
Chairman, I just want to point out a couple of things. One, the city manager has submitted a resignation effective 60 days from now. To accept a resignation and demand that it be immediate is more like a termination. I will caution you against doing a termination of the city manager, either with cause or without cause. It would implicate contract provisions. Also, due process and name clearing hearing opportunities. You do not want to be without a city manager, even for one day tomorrow. There are certain things the city manager must do, so you would need to notice and appoint an interim city manager, perhaps from one of your own employees. The schedule that's in front of you on the agenda item that's been moved up, 11A has the job description, the, the schedule. If you'd like to make these dates sooner, you certainly can, for example, change June 11th to June 1st or something. You can move these dates up quite drastically, even if you'd want to, but you don't not, I recommend against immediate termination of the city manager. He's resigned, but he's resigning effective 60 days from now. Make it less than that is, is similar to a termination.
You know, and also, in those same lines, you know, we haven't talked, you know, I think what we need to be talking about tonight is, you know, what we want in the announcement, you know, what, what, what direction do we want to go forward? Mr. Andrews wants you just to tell him, pack your bags and get the hell out. We have no idea, we haven't talked about any of this stuff, you know? And I think we need to be talking about the application that we're gonna be putting out, or the announcement we're gonna be putting out, you know, how we're gonna work with an interim city manager, or are we gonna go with the, it used to be called the Range Riders, I'm not sure if that's what they're still called, you know, who do we bring in as the city manager, or the acting or the interim city manager? Because this is also, according to our charter, must be someone that is ICMA-qualified, period. That's what our charter says. So, you know, even in this, on page 156, it said, should be an active member or will become a member upon employment by the city with, and it says within two, two years. No, it has to say in the, in the announcement, the person must be ICMA-qualified today, before we even talk to them. If they're not ICMA-qualified, we should not be wasting our time talking to someone. That's just taking up time. That's busy work.
Mayor, as I-
One more thing, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just wanted to point out one thing, I'm sorry. In the memo, it points out that the city manager's last scheduled day is July 9th. This schedule backs in from July 9th, so on July 9th, you should have a new city manager. You could have a transition on that same day. If you, if you follow this schedule, if you'd like to accelerate it, you can. If you'd like to postpone it, or elongate it, or make it more of a duration and hire an interim city manager, or a range riding, riding city manager, that's, that's a possibility too. But this schedule was put together so that you would have a new city manager on his 60th day.
You know, also, with what you said, Mr. Brooks, was, you know, if we let him go today and he's terminated, then by Florida statute, we're paying him 20 weeks of pay, versus, this way, we're paying eight weeks of pay. We're paying a million June, and then he's, he's out of here.
And even if you are displeased with the city manager, he's leaving in 60 days, I don't see, if you're gonna terminate him and have-
Otherwise, we pay 20 weeks of pay.
I believe that, I believe the wording of his contract does give us the right to terminate, to, to accept his resignation immediately, Ralph. I'll, I'll reread it again, but I believe I read it already.
Madam Mayor, the board can shorten the term of the 60-day notice. That's what the contract says. The other thing I want to communicate to the board is that there's two things that are concerning to me. One is that the employees that are watching this, we have to exude confidence and stability for the employees as much as possible. The other side is, those that are looking to come to this organization, that is a great organization and is a great community, a great city, and has a lot to offer to someone that serves in this capacity, we have to be mindful of what we say, how we say it, and how we conduct business. If a city manager is looking at this opportunity and says, this is the next step for me, they're going to look at board meetings, they're gonna do their research. So I would definitely encourage the board, as much as things we have still left on the horizon to do, if we can focus on the public's business, if we can move forward in a progressive and cordial way, until this timeframe is up, I think everyone would be better served for it. I don't think squabbling, or arguing, or getting in back-and-forth debates and discussions concerning people's perceptions of what happened, or, or their own research that they have decided to, to pick and choose what they utilize is productive for the, for the city or productive for the, the employee. So I would ask the board, if we, if this is something that we would like to table and have another conversation in another day, we can certainly do that, but it was to move forward with getting the job posted so we can start the recruitment process.
I think we do need to move forward with this part of it. If we want to have another meeting talking about the 60-day time period, that's fine too, but I think we need to get the application out there as quickly as possible. If we put this off for another week, that's another week later that we're gonna be, before we hire someone. So I think maybe we need to divide this into two separate things. One, the application, and then do a separate meeting for his resignation, and if he wants to bring up for 60 days, I'm letting him bring, less than 60 days, I'm letting him bring it up.
Madam Mayor, I would like to just say that, I think this is, I, I want to go exactly as we have in the schedule here. There's no reason we cannot accomplish this. Commissioner Andrews did ask for, made a motion to, to ask for Mr. Evans to leave, I guess. I don't know how you want to pursue that. I personally want to go right along with our schedule here. There's no reason that we can't start the, the process that to, that post the position and the job description on May 17th, review all those applications that we will get in, have a civilized, a civilized meetings with interviewees, with Mr. Evans while he's here. I have, I, I can't tell you how I feel this city was very, very in horrible straits when Mr. Evans first got here. We were all discombobulated. He was fired from Riviera Beach in 2017 for being honest and ethical, and now they want him back, so he's going back, okay? But I've listened to, to us talk, I've watched the, you know, the other meetings that he's, has been in. We gave him a superior evaluation, four of us sitting up here in, in February, gave him a superior evaluation. I've listened to elected officials and staffers all around Pinellas County, and some even from other parts of the state, and it's always been, it's always been how fortunate we are to have him. I think we need to keep him for the 60 days, until he's probably 57 now, whatever it is, but we need to keep him, we need to work to get a good city manager in here, and I think that Mr. Evans is the person to assist us and to guide us in doing that procedure. I, I've lived here for 40 years, and I've worked with 10 city managers in those 40 years, and I, believe me, I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And Mr. Evans has truly been the most effective and the most productive city manager that we have had in this city in 40 years, so I just admonish all of us to put our heads together, work through this process, get it done, and have a new city manager in, in-house by July 9th. Thank you.
I agree with Debbie. We've got, Mr. Evans has started a lot of projects, and we need to get as far as we can before he goes on and we go on.
And also, I would like to say that, you know, the initiatives and the accomplishments that we have done as a board with Mr. Evans' guidance, the, the website overall, the enterprise leasing, the, just different things, the comprehensive salary survey, his negotiated five-year contract with the King of the Beach, all these different things in the past since February of 2018 have been a positive influence on our city, and that's what we need to remember as we go forth. Thank you.
And he is very well respected by his peers.
Okay, the evening is moving on, and this is our meeting for tonight. I do feel like, Doug, excuse me, I know you made a motion, and I don't know if I can overtalk on the motion that you made, but I do feel like we need to do this at a separate meeting- meeting. We can do it today's Tuesday. We could do it Thursday and get it organized and get it started at that time. I feel right now that we're not getting anywhere.
I agree. I agree. I, let's post the job, and I would like to shorten the timeframe on it.
So if we could maybe get together?
I can't do it this week. I'm actually going to be gone until Monday, so I leave tonight.
All right.
But I can, I can meet anytime next week, and we can discuss the other portion of it, but I'd like to get this, or the job posting posted as soon as possible. I really and truly, my goal is to get somebody in here as quickly as possible. This person should have a say in their budget going forward if they're going to run the city. They shouldn't be going off of somebody else's budget if we can, if we can do that, if we can help that. So that is my point, okay? I'll, I'll pull back. We can, we can have a conversation about Mr. Evans' time here and how long he can stay for at another time. We can do it next week, but I would like to get this posted today or tomorrow.
City Clerk, would you be able to get something together for us, let's say, at the beginning of the week? Would we be able to have something? And would we be allowed to hold a special meeting and just have this on the agenda, nothing else?
I'm sorry, I'm unclear what this means.
What I'm asking for is just a separate, special meeting, just with this information to discuss.
Some of the information of the city manager, as you will recall on the charter, is solely, has the sole and exclusive power for hiring and firing a department director. So if you want to go back over that department director issue, he's, he's no longer here. Is that what you're talking about, having a meeting about?
No, 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 Mr. Brooks. What I'm talking about is that we were going to discuss the recruitment process and how we were going to go about, you know, bringing in someone as a city manager, the interviews, interim city manager, if we need to bring in an interim city manager. I feel like we need to sit down just at a meeting with nothing but that on the agenda so we can openly discuss it.
How to find a future city manager, interim city manager?
Correct.
Not going over all this stuff about the past?
No, no, no.
Okay. I'm confused then. I, thank you for straightening that out of my own head.
You know, so we can get an idea where we need to go from and then move on. We need to move on. Everybody needs to move on. You know, we're like sitting here, you know, and like I said, this is our meeting for tonight, and we're going to be here four hours.
Is there a motion to approve this tentative schedule to, to post the, post the job?
Yes, I move that we, um...
I have a question because this is under staff reports. Are staff reports something you have a motion on?
Yeah, well, we've utilized it both ways. We've utilized it in a way that you can take official legislative action if you choose to, or it's an informational item. What we can do, if the board would be so inclined, we can post a general description of the organization. We're looking to secure city manager. Here's the application. The job description is something that we can refine at another meeting, if that's something the board, but we can post something and start accepting resumes and that so we can get something out on Friday. But the actual job description, that's something, once we receive that, those applications, that we will use those applications and put them next to the job description and see if those folks meet the minimum qualifications, and then those will be the ones that would be furnished to you that meet the minimum qualifications. And then we'll also give you a stack of those that didn't meet qualifications so you can still look at the folks in the pile. But we can put it out on Friday, if it's the board's pleasure, just to get a general, probably, you know, a paragraph about the organization, about, you know, what the, some of the major projects are, some of the core competencies, but the job description, once we finalize that, we can, we can load that up on the website. So if the board's pleasure, that's how we can accomplish that and just get it out.
Okay, may I ask a question, city manager?
Certainly.
Okay, we need to post, though, when we are posting the actual job description, or I'm sorry, the actual, you know, notice for the job, we do need to post, I think, the charter requirements, okay? And then some of the other wording, okay, is not. But I'd like, I would like to ask a question then, please, about the, the application itself, okay? The, the job posting is what you've given us. Let's see. I think I only had a few questions.
Well, Ms. Paulson is here, and it's not her first rodeo. I think you pretty much know just about how to get it posted and out there, correct?
Yeah. I'd recommend it goes through Florida League of Cities, too, through their job posting because most city managers, city attorneys review that.
We do, we would do Florida, Florida League of Cities, Florida City County Management Association, ICMA, and then some other job websites and things that we utilize, but we can put, it's not considered a job description as job announcements that say, "Hey, the city of Madeira Beach is looking for a city manager." We don't have to put anything at this particular moment as salary. We can put, you know, depending on qualifications, but once we get the job description blessed by this board, that will be something that we would utilize as the matrix to decide who's the people that meet minimum qualifications to bring it back to you for ranking in a public meeting.
Okay, well, then I move to post the position and job description on May 17th, 2019.
And would that include, does that motion include going forward, the schedule as is?
I really don't see the, I don't see the advantage. I guess I just have to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Hodges. I don't understand what, unless somebody puts forth an agenda and exactly what items you want to go forward. I mean, I am of the complete opinion that our sitting city manager should, I have no problem with our existing city manager seeing us and guiding us through this process. We are the ones making the decisions. He's not going to make the decision, but the process itself is something that I, I think that he would have great, I think his opinions and I think his enlightenment to so, so many things are, have been very important to us in the past, and I don't see why that is not going to be. I don't know that certain individuals or certain current members of different boards, whatever, have personal vendettas with, with Mr. Evans. I'm not questioning that. I'm not even asking it, but I'm saying that he has guided us in a correct manner, and I think that we should take his opinions and his, his evaluations to worth. Thank you.
And, and Madam Mayor, you will see all the applications for the job. We'll put them in different categories, you know? Category A, they meet all the qualifications. Category B, they're missing X, Y, and Z. And category C, they applied for the job and, and here that is. So in the event that you find somebody that's stellar in category B or category C and you want to elevate them to category A, that's a public policy decision that you, as the board, can make.
So can we have a special meeting?
We can. I don't, I don't think we need one.
You don't feel it's necessary to sit and discuss this and have it open to the public? The city manager's job is a very important job, and I feel like the input from the community...
But the input for the community is, we're talking about the schedule of how we're doing it.
Right.
The community really doesn't...
No, well, that's what I mean. We need to have the special meeting so we can get everything lined up on this.
It is already lined up.
Before you vote on this, you should take public comment, too. That reminds me, the people that are here today might want to express an opinion.
All right, so we want to open this to public comment now.
Pling, 806 Bay Point Drive, and I believe that the setup that our attorney has given really good advice about going ahead, accepting the resignation, and there are so many projects that are started that need to be finished. I, I, I guess what I'm hearing from Mr. Andrews is he doesn't really, he believes the policy commissioners should be doing direct management and seems to have a real problem, and I just feel that we should go forward with it, and I'm so glad that Mr. Evans is going to stay for sixty days to help this transition. And as to the concern of Mr. Commissioner Andrews as to the budget, the commissioners are the ones who approve the budget, and they modify it as they need to during the year, and I, you know, having a brand-new, you know, you're just not going to, I've seen so many, this is the first in thirty-eight years, this is the first city manager that I actually have a lot of professional respect for. I believe he's been very ethical, and to hear people talking the way they've been talking about him today, just tonight, just upsets me very much, and it reflects so poorly on the polarization of this city. All these personal things. We've had managers that have been on all kinds of jobs, barely here, barely available, starting corporations, blah, 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 but we don't need to go there. Certainly no one who keeps track of City Hall finds that Mr. Evans is not working on behalf of the city or reads his monthly reports to citizens. We've never had anybody do that before, and it's been wonderful, meeting with citizens with big responses, and I just, please go forward, and I see no point to another special meeting. We'll just hear more innuendo, et cetera, from the commissioner. Thank you.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. I truly find it odd that you would send out a notice for a city manager without the people who are applying for this job knowing what that specific job is. I understand the charter says things, but you're talking about adding other things to it, and that really needs to be in the publication somehow. He needs to know the whole picture, not part of the, or those, your candidates need to know the whole picture, not part of the picture, when they submit their resume. The other thing is, once you have acquired your candidates, I really do not like the idea of commissioners being in separate rooms and the candidates going to each commissioner privately. What I would like to see is the commission to set up on the dais, and the candidates that you want to interview are sitting in the hot seat so the public can hear and so that other commissioners can hear the questions and the responses to those questions. I think that's very, very appropriate. And then with that, the public has information on how you, as commissioners, feel the city should go and how your candidates feel the city should go. I think it's very important to do the interviews in cubbyholes where it's not in the sunshine is just wrong. The city manager is going to work with all the citizens, and we are the citizens, and you represent the citizens, but there's value in being able to hear what other commissioners ask and the responses that they have. It triggers questions. The other thing is, I think that the new city manager ought to come on much sooner than just a couple of days before his final days, and I think he ought to be part of the budget process so he understands the thinking of where Mr. Evans is. So they need to work together because it's going to be the new city manager's budget. It's not going to be Mr. Evans' budget, and I think that's very critical to get that done, to get him in earlier, if not later. And then maybe at some point, they'll say, "We got it," and Jonathan may say, "Hey, I'm out of here." The new city manager's got it. He's got a handle on what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to the speaker's comments in the tentative schedule, we did schedule Tuesday, June 25th, a public interview with all five candidates, so the Board of Commissioners will be seated on the dais, and the candidates would be in the proverbial hot seat, and all the interviews will be in, in a public forum, and, and the dialogue would be obviously televised, and members of the public will be able to, to attend those sessions. So that...
That's a little bit different. It's what's done in the past.
Right, and, and we changed that.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
You know, I, I got issues with that. I think that we need to interview first and then pick the top five and then interview them again in the public forum. You know, for...
I disagree. Well, that's what it says, the top five will interview in a public forum.
You know, I, I guess if, if I've got the five candidates sitting out here, and candidate one comes up here, you know, unless they're in a room away from any TV or anything else, I don't want candidate one, or candidate five, to hear what candidate one is, is saying and answering and stuff like that. That's my concerns right now.
We, we would sequester all the candidates. They will be in the conference room. They're not allowed to have mobile devices. There'll be a staff person present with them in the conference room, and we just call them in, and they come in. Also, we're mindful of any members in the public that, or family members that they may have. We actually would take their cell phone so they're not getting texts as far as what the questions are. So in the past, I've had experience with regards to those types of interview processes to make sure that there's no way of the information being communicated or shared with those folks that are considered your, your top-five candidates. So we've, we've already played out what all situations are, so it would be the first time that they would see those questions if you were to do that public interview process.
Okay, so I made the motion to post the position on May the 17th, and I think that if it's necessary, and that we should move on to the, the next item on the agenda, and if it's necessary, then the city manager or the city, the, the mayor can call a special meeting with regards to the innu, you know, to the nuances, as you would say, and to all these other things, okay, that we have questions on.
And what I can do is I can send out an email of the revised job description, just based on some things that need to be tweaked, and then the city clerk and I can call each of the commissioners individually to get any perspective on some tweaks and modifications so we can kind of get the job description honed in as much as possible, because you're in a job ad, you're not going to produce the whole job description. You're just going to look for minimum qualifications, certifications, and, and on, you know, an understanding of what the job entails. So we'll work on something, share it with the board, and then the clerk and I will, will reach out to the board this week to get your perspective on it.
Okay, the only thing, like I said, is that one, we're under preferred skills. They must be a member of the ICMA in good standings because that's what is put into the charter.
Sir.
Not that they have two years to get it.
Okay.
And actually, city manager, I think that you had mentioned in your memo that this description here was actually one that was used previously, so that's why it did not have the up-to-date charter wording.
That, that is correct. That is correct.
Okay, so that's why it didn't have the up-to-date charter wording, which it will.
Then I'll, I'll go ahead and check in Debbie's motion.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Wait a minute, now we have to go all the way back. Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion in a second?
We need a motion.
No, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda, A and B, both items, as written.
To approve.
Any discussion? How is consent agenda? Will city clerk please call the roll? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is unfinished business resolution 2019-4, Board of Commissioners' Policy Handbook.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, if I can have the city clerk read the title into the record?
Resolution 2019-04, A Resolution of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, Amending the City of Madera Beach Board of Commissioners' Policy Handbook and Providing for an Effective Date.
Board members, this is your policy handbook that governs the way in which you are to conduct yourself as a member of the Board of Commissioners here in the city of Madera Beach. The city clerk and staff have gone through this particular document and have made some modifications and some changes consistent with the direction that has been provided by the Board of Commissioners. Staff stands prepared to make any additional tweaks to the manual in the event that there was something that we have omitted as part of your last discussions. There would be no need to modify the resolution if there is some changes because the board can just say to insert the changes into the manual. And when the resolution is adopted with the revisions in there, it will take place, it will be inserted into the document and be a final document that would be part of your final policies and procedures manual and would be a relevant document once the document is approved. So staff stands prepared to answer any questions. The city clerk and I can provide any additional clarifications on any of the sections the board may have some questions on.
I have a couple of questions. In two places, it's referred to as a public information, well, one is as Public Information Specialist and the other says Public Information Officer. Which is the correct title?
It is, at this particular moment, Public Information Specialist.
Okay. So then, on page 44, it's referred to as a public information...
Officer.
Officer. Right. So that should be changed to Specialist. And then, on... That might be it. Oh, one more item I wanted to talk about, actually, two. On page 52, under Proclamation and Presentations, it has a public comment. And I'd like to revise that to say public comment is in person and is not represented by emails or tweets or other types of information. Page 52.
Is that all there?
One more.
Okay.
Page 53, under B, Presentations, it says the 15-minute time limit includes any public comment and discussion by the Board of Commissioners. And we discussed that last meeting, that 15-minute time limit, you can't figure out how long you're talking, if you don't know how long the board's going to talk. I think we should strike public comment and discussion by the board, just say it's a 15-minute time limit for the speakers.
For the speaker.
That's it for me.
Is that it for you?
Yes.
Okay. May I?
Please.
Okay. Yes. And I'll use the, if y'all want to follow along, I'll use the number, not the number at the lowest part of the page, but the actual page number for the, okay, for the item, okay? Okay. So if we can go to, and at first, I started off just with a couple of big ones. And then, the second time I read it, I thought, well, might as well just get it right to begin, I mean, just get it all done, right? So if we can go to page three, and under Public Communications, on that second line, Clara, "The Board of Commissioners will endeavor to inform and interact with the public in meaningful and respectful ways that convey accurate information." Take out that word reliable because I don't know what, it's using the following guidelines, right? Okay? So, yeah, so if you'll just change that reliable to using. And then, on the first bullet point, make sure we say, "Commission members shall make no promises on behalf of the Board of Commissioners." And then, on the last, one, two, three, I'm sorry, the bullet, one, two, three, the bullet four, where it says it's inappropriate, and you said, "Commission members," instead of cannot, it should be may not. And that's true on the next bullet and the next one. The word should be may instead of can if we really want to be picky, and you know how I am, so we might as well do it right. Anyway, okay. And so that's it for that page. Let's see. If we go over to page nine, "Correspondents shall be equally clear about representation." Remember, we talked about that? And I really, I thought, well, I didn't think, I even wrote it down, so we must have talked about it. It was the consensus of the Board of Commissioners that we would put somewhere in there, we would make the comment that if city letterhead was used, that the city clerk or the city manager would approve that letter to be sent out if it's on city letterhead. So can we change that? Do you remember that? Okay. And so that was it for page nine. And page, okay, so just keep moving along here. On page 21, I also had that comment that you had, Mayor, about the 15-minute limit includes any public contact. So we've corrected that. But then, if we'll just go a little bit further down, manner of addressing the Board of Commissioners under item 6A. We did discuss, and it was the consensus also of the board, that comment cards would be an ideal thing to institute now, that comment cards to be completed by individuals from the audience, whether it's a public forum question or an agenda item, would really help the city clerk in, you know, being able to show who, to be able to identify that person's name, address, and the item that they're talking about. And that the comment card would be available at the back table when an individual comes in for a commission workshop meeting, whatever. That the agenda item, that's right, the person's name, address, and the item number they want to address, and just a brief comment about what it is. And so can we please put that in instead of, and then the city clerk, I believe, also keeps those cards. Is that correct, city clerk? You keep the cards and you identify the individual to come to the podium?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that if you would.
Okay. And that's what we discussed. So is it satisfactory to please change that? And then, oops, there was one other thing, I think. Oh, yes. Remember, we talked about, at the very end, city clerk, we talked about the cellphone usage in City Hall and we, I mean, when we were at the dais. And we made the comments, I put cell phones and then I put question by it because it was the consensus that we should not either use cell phones. Do you remember that, city manager? That we should not either use cell phones or have them available for our use when we're on the dais?
I remember the board discussing about technology being on the dais, and it was going to be specific, I think, to city-owned devices or something in that regards. But I do remember the conversation, the specificities, escapes me at this moment.
Okay. So the actual usage of the cellphone or having the cellphone on the dais should not be, I mean, should be a part of this handbook, right?
Right. That was the one I wasn't for sure on, if it was just going to be city-owned or no devices or...
Okay.
So you want it to be no city-owned? No.
But no personal cell phones.
Only city-owned.
Right. Okay.
Yes. Thank you for bringing it up because I was going to ask about that.
Okay. And that ends my, thank you.
We're actually working with, and I think Clara and Kurt have a meeting tomorrow with the vendor to talk about the closed captioning and the changes to the public access channel. So we're in the final stages of being able to effectively do that and make sure that we're in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Any more discussion on this? I'll open the floor for public comment.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. A couple of things on Mrs. Weinstein's, on the devices. I don't think she should have any devices up there, period. So there's no communication between Ms. Weinstein and Ms. Hodges or Mr. Andrews and Ms. Black that is not public. So I think it needs to be, all devices need to be eliminated from the dais, period. I think it's just...
Let me answer that real quick. The reason we said the iPads for the city is because we're doing away with the paper and all of our, everything is going to come to us on the iPad.
But you text, right? You can text on those iPads.
I don't know if you can or can't. I'm not...
Can you text on those iPads?
Sunshine prohibits you from talking by text or by email or by passing notes. It has to all be verbal.
So, but I thought we were going to the...
To be retained, yes.
...the iPads for receiving the agendas and all that kind of stuff.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Will you pause the time since they're arguing? I'm losing mine.
I apologize. But, you know, I thought we had talked about that, that our agendas would be coming on the iPad.
Right.
So that's how everything would be coming up rather than...
Right.
Keep cutting down trees.
And there is a way through the iPads themselves to disable the text messaging function in addition to where we've just signed a contract with a records retention software that will be able to capture any text messages that are done on city-owned devices.
And that would be public record?
That is public record, yeah.
But what about emails?
That's already public record. That's backed up on the city servers. Yep. But what we would do is, we would disable the text messaging feature off the iPads in its entirety.
In meetings?
Altogether.
Oh, altogether. Okay. Yeah, that would be beneficial, I think. Agreement there, maybe? The other thing is, your public comment, 15 minutes, that's kind of ridiculous. That's only five people who get to comment on any issue. That's terrible. Well, explain me if I'm wrong. It says 15 minutes for public comment.
For presentations, or for presentation.
Only presentations.
Presentation by an individual other than a public comment.
Okay. So you're not limiting public comment. Three minutes, but as many people as want to speak. Okay. That's still the same. Okay. Good. The other thing is, the comment cards, I don't understand why, because we come up, we mention our name, we say our address, who we are, and it is all captured and written down. Is that not true? The meetings?
The city clerk does not take verbatim minutes. So she does specify that if somebody does state their address or those types of things, that there are some times where it's captured, there are some times where it's not captured. The other side of it is, there's information that we would ask for contact if somebody comes and says they have an issue at certain address and they leave a phone number. Now we have a way to get ahold of them or an email address. So that's behind the comment cards.
So my question is, is that if somebody wants to speak, the only way they can speak is if they do a comment card.
We cannot force somebody to fill out a comment card. We would just encourage them to fill out the comment card. So what the clerk would do would read the comment cards. Then, if there's anyone else that chose not to fill out a comment card, for whatever reason, they then would be able to come up. But we would ask that they do fill out a comment card.
But it's not required.
Not a requirement, no.
So people could still get up and speak without a comment card?
That is correct.
Commissioners, you agree on that?
Do you want to?
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed on this topic. Next item is ordinance...
Need a resolution to approve that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution 2019-04, Amending the City of Madera Beach Board of Commissioners' Policy Handbook, inserting the changes made on May the 14th.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance 2019-06, amended fees and collections procedure manual. First reading, Director Portelle.
Mayor and Commissioners, our intent here was to open this up for discussion, and we have all the department heads here who can address changes they were making to their own portion of the fees. And as I, however, as I got up here to prepare, I realized you don't have cross out, you don't have strikeout and underline. The copy that I just printed off of the, yeah, just the clerk section has all the underlines in it. Some of them came out. Yeah. So there's odds and ends that, I don't know what happened in the translation, but somehow or the other, something got lost.
Yeah. This is one that we, the one that was in the folders, one we uploaded.
Yeah.
So we can...
I guess we need to hold off till the next meeting, till we have all the information.
Right. We'll get you a new version because it's kind of hard to go if you can't see what the changes are.
Good point. All right. We'll table that until the next meeting. Next item is...
Mayor, can we please take a five-minute break, sir?
Certainly. Is everyone in agreement with a five-minute break?
Six.
All right. Six minutes.
Ms. Weinstein?
Yes. Yes.
But, that's what it is.
We're all here. Were reconvened at 8:00 PM.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, from talking to the Finance Director, Mr. Pierce, on the short break we had, he's saying that it's very imperative that we look at this fee schedule so he can do his work on the budget for next year. So what I would like to, you know, recommend is that if they can get us a copy of the fee schedule quickly, we move it to the last item on the agenda for tonight. I know it will keep the meeting later, but at least then he'll be able to start with, and working on the budget for the city.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to the Commissioner's point, the reason that we experienced the issue with the fee ordinance is that last week, we had some issues in regards to the city server. We were actually in a test environment because our server was experiencing some issues. And when the switch went and we went on to the live environment, some of the changes that occurred as part of the fee ordinance modifications did not transfer over. The city clerk, fortunately enough, when she made the changes, she was in the live environment, and that's why you saw the changes in her document. Director Portell is going to attempt to see if she's got the latest version of that document, and then we can discuss it at the conclusion of the meeting. If we cannot confirm that that is the latest version, staff would recommend that we call another meeting to discuss, that we just don't want to put a version on there that you would have to ultimately adopt on, that will adopt and go into law. So we're gonna do some research and we'll come back, but that's the issue that we experienced with that item.
You know, I just think, you know, the word "budget" has come up so many times tonight from so many different people, that if we can do it tonight, I think it would...
I agree with that. I'll do it.
Yeah, tonight is first reading, too, so there will be a second reading also after, so we can get the first reading out of the way. Yep.
All right, I'm sure that's fine. So we're in agreement to put that at the end of the meeting after, as item...
B. Business, is that B?
We can move that item to, when we get to the section of the turtle ordinance...
After the turtle ordinance.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
All right, so now we're on...
Generator.
Item C, purchase of generator for City Hall.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, previously, the board took action to move forward with, well, staff presented an item that we would move forward with the purchase of a 400-kilowatt three-phase generator to be able to provide additional power for the City Hall campus, the fire department, and then look to relocate the existing generator that's at the fire department over to the recreation center that would allow for us to be active post the event and to be able to serve our residents in the event of a storm or an incident where we needed to utilize the city facilities. The board did consider this item. It did not pass. It failed by a vote of two to one. Per the charter, it requires an affirmative vote of three for an item to pass. This item was requested to be brought back to the Board of Commissioners for discussion. The anticipated cost for the generator is projected to be between $250,000 to $275,000. Currently, in the unrestricted fund balance for the emergency disaster preparedness, there's a balance of approximately $2.2 million, with another $222,000 that will be going into that account per your fund balance policy. We anticipate that to retrofit the recreation center to be able to have backup power, it will cost about $60,000 for a total cost of $340,000. The city believes that we could obtain some funding to offset the actual cost for the generator and its installation to the tune of 50 to 75 percent, and staff is requesting authorization to proceed forward with the acquisition, acquisition and installation of a 400-kilowatt three-phase generator. The fire chief should be present here to talk about some of the life safety elements as to what this generator can assist on for an activation. So staff stands prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor, Commissioners?
Chief?
I think the city manager covered the information fairly well. Do you have any questions of myself or staff? You know, during emergency operations, it's imperative that we have electricity. You know, we had, you know, Irma came to town and basically we had all the city staff. Every one of our workers was actually crammed into the fire department. It severely limited our ability to perform city government operations. Putting this generator in service here will allow us to staff this building, maintain the integrity of our city operations, without question. And Commissioners, you know very well that rains really hard out here, and we get a thunderstorm, your power goes out during your commission meetings. With this automatic generator to backup power, it'll work seamlessly and you won't have an issue with that. So it serves multiple functions for us, but the one that's paramount is the emergency services aspect.
Fire Chief O'Neill?
Yes, ma'am.
When we originally built the fire station, there was two generators put in. Was there a warranty of any kind on those generators?
There was a warranty. That warranty, I think, was only for a year.
A year?
Yes, ma'am.
Using an item that big, they give you more of a warranty timeframe.
The entire building, at the completion of this construction, the architects that designed the building told us we only had a one-year warranty on the entire building. So, yeah.
Okay, and then I realized that this past year, you had indicated pictures that the rats got into the area where the generators were, and one of them destroyed, one of the generators were destroyed.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, that since hasn't been repaired, correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? Okay, but you still have another generator there that is working properly?
We only have one generator. When this building was constructed, there was only one generator purchased.
I thought there was two put in.
No, ma'am, just one.
Okay.
One generator. We have a mobile generator on the ladder truck, but that would not nearly function large enough to supply this building. But, yeah, there was only one permanent generator purchased at that time.
Okay. Now, the cost of taking the one generator that you do have now and taking it down to the rec center was gonna be an additional $60,000 for the installation on that.
I believe that's what the cost was.
That is correct.
Yes.
So the total cost then for the generator that they wanna put in now at the fire station is $340,000?
Yes, ma'am. What's gonna happen is that generator for the fire station is also gonna power up this entire building. The generator that's currently at the fire station will be relocated down to the rec center. We're really kinda doing ourselves a disservice if we've built some very strong structures here. You know, all these buildings are rated to cap five standards. But if we don't have power to operate inside those buildings, then they're pretty much useless to us during the emergency services operations.
I understand the emergency services operation with the fire trucks and the fire department, but as far as City Hall goes, you know, we were without electricity, I think, the last time for about a week, and they did do some of their work from City Hall inside the fire station.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure it was just a skeleton crew. You didn't have an additional 30 people in there or anything like that.
It was a mess in there because, yeah, all those operations were having to be operated outside of the fire station. The firefighters, you know, they have a regular operation, a regular routine that they do for emergency services. Whenever, you know, we call additional staffing back in, we just don't have one group of firefighters on duty. We call all of our staff back in. We staff multiple pieces of apparatus during that situation. So now instead of having four guys at the fire station, or six guys at the fire station, we've got 15 guys at the fire station. And then you have these other individuals that are having to come in there even just for breaks and for time and to get water and refresh, get showers. You know, we had a lot of people in there who were doing a fantastic job from the rec center, from Public Works, from the marina. You know, we have, it's a big deal for us when we have those types of situations, and this would make it easier for us to manage and maintain our operations for that time. You know, the rec center staffs, you know, I mean, they have a cap five rated building down there. They are above what the flood plain levels are. You know, they could still staff that building, still maintain the cleanup operations and all the things that we have to do prior to and during the storm and help with the cleanup operations afterwards. Cleanup after the fact is huge. You know, and it's nice to at least have our staff so they can get all their paperwork squared away, and after the end of their workday or halfway through their workday, they can get a nice hot shower, get a nice hot meal, those kinda things. And it makes the job much more efficient, more effective for them.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanna point out one thing, too, and I think it was mentioned by the city manager last time we talked about this. We have a grant, we have applied for a grant also for almost the same amount, and part of that grant is to be proactive, and that's why they're allowing the grant, is to be proactive in lieu of a hurricane. And so we have submitted, Karen has submitted all the documentation for that. So, you know, there's a good chance we could get reimbursement for this expenditure. I also wanna point out, too, this isn't just for hurricane or storms. We've actually incurred power outages a couple of days in the last couple of months where the power's gone down. And it's a loss of productivity, and actually, and over kinda the IT area, it's almost like two or three hours to get everybody back up and running when something like that happens. So you're wasting time, you're wasting money.
Was this the last generator on the shelf? Because there was no other bids or anything, no bids really, just a flat price of $340,000?
I'm sure the Finance Director is researching those options and opportunities for us.
And I think the city manager and I have talked, and we've talked to the building official, and these are the numbers that estimates that we're getting from some of the contractors that we come in contact with. And so this is, you know, a very good estimate of what we're projecting, what it would have cost. And again, it would come out of the fund balance that's earmarked for emergency-type purposes, and this is clearly something that would fall under that category. And as the city manager indicated, there's an additional $244,000 that I couldn't stop, that the auditor calculated after he completed the audit, that's gonna go into that emergency fund for our policy. And now, at some point, the city manager and I have talked about this, at some point, we have to reach, what is a good comfort level of that emergency fund, and when can we actually put a halt to it? And in talking to the auditor, the auditor indicated, hey, look, all you need to do is go to the board and adjust that policy, and you can put a halt to the contributions to that. At some point, there's a dollar amount in there that might be appropriate.
To the Finance Director's point, and I think we're kinda getting off topic, but the money is in the emergency preparedness fund. We anticipate that we would be able to receive a large grant to be able to offset most of the costs associated with acquiring the generator. The other side of the issue is that the $224,000 that has to be taken from general revenue to be put in the emergency... to be put in the emergency fund is, that fund is extremely healthy. Also, your insurance carrier has said that in the event of a catastrophe, you have more than adequate coverage and resources to be able to do that. So, what's happening is any incremental growth that you're seeing in your ad valorem growth is being put into this fund, and the money is not working for the residents. So, one of the things that we want to talk about is there's opportunities to utilize that money for paying down towards your debt service. Because if you took that $224,000 and you associated with the $15-million capital bank note that we're looking to move forward on, that's a sizable amount of money to pay down the debt a lot more aggressively. So, that's something that we want to bring to the Board because that fund is so healthy and that is basically your second rainy day fund that you have in place. So, those are some things that we were going to bring to the Board to have some conversations here in the next couple of weeks. But nonetheless, we believe that this is a good thing for us, emergency preparedness, and having these facilities that in a worst-case scenario, that if our residents needed to utilize restroom facilities or we needed to feed our residents or have to have folks housed in here in the event of a storm, right now, the only facility that we would be able to have to occupy or to be able to accommodate that is the fire station. And these facilities would remain dark until regular power is restored.
And it does say that we will have competitive bids.
Yeah.
So, at this time, we're looking at $340,000 plus the 60 that would go with the Rec Center. And then, the installation, is that included in the 340?
The 340 is turnkey, Vice Mayor. That is for all the, that's for the new generator, the installation of the new generator and the installation and the connection over at the Recreation Department. That's all-inclusive.
If we approve this tonight, how soon would we be able to move on this with hurricane season just right around the corner?
Realistically, we'll end up getting it at the end of hurricane season because of the timeframe.
Mayor, remember we talked about this last year? That $340,000 is never going to get any less. Last year, it might have been 275 or 280, but everything goes up. And I asked to bring this back because I was not here when this failed. And I think it's, I think it's very critical to the city, to the operations of the city, to the safety of our employees and to the safety of our citizens to have a fully operating, large enough generator. I don't know what we had before, but I just know that, to me, the importance of maintaining the continuity of government of our, you know, what we have to do in the City Hall in the event of a disaster and providing safe places to, as the City Manager said and as Director Pierce said, well, I don't know if Director Pierce said it, but I know you said it, for, to accommodate staff or to accommodate, gosh, we don't know, perhaps even elderly people that can't get out, you know, that can't leave, is a responsibility of the city. You know, it's not like building a, you know, building something, building a swimming pool, you know? It's required. We have the responsibility. We have the obligation of providing that safety for our citizens. So, I think we need to make, you know, post haste. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. Has the grant been applied for yet?
Yes.
Okay. You have paperwork on it, Walt?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'd like to see that. Also, why are we, I guess I'm a little confused. Why are we voting on this now when we don't have competitive bids? Why don't we get the competitive bids together and then why don't we go from there? It doesn't seem like it's mission critical. And if we wanted bids at the moment, why didn't we, I mean, February, this came up. We could have gotten three, four bids by then. Can we get competitive bids just to make sure that we're, I mean, $340,000 is a lot of money. Just make sure that we're getting the best deal.
Well, what we're voting on is to go forward and get competitive bids.
Oh, we're voting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As far as I can see.
Is that what we're voting on?
We're voting on, it's kind of a two-phase item, is that we're requesting authorization to proceed forward with the expenditure request of $340,000 with the understanding that we're going to go through the competitive solicitation process. So, that number invariably will come down. That's the worst-case scenario. But we want it to move forward because that has to be designed and acquired and it's a pretty lengthy process to go through that.
What process is lengthy?
The process of getting, once we get the bids and the quotes, then the design of the generator, the permitting process, the cranes that are going to have to be acquired to move the generator from the fire station over to Recreation, the hookup, there's a bunch of different components to it. So, we wanted to first get the understanding that the Board wanted to proceed forward with this expenditure request, and then we will make sure that it complies with all the procurement policies, and then we can furnish that back to the Board once we receive it.
What we're doing here is trying to account for the funds to make this happen.
Right, right.
I'd like to open the floor for public comment on this item.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. I've been around the city a little bit, but I haven't seen any orange plugs. So, do you have a UPS system here? Uninterrupted power supply. That's where it goes from AC to DC back to AC, so you will not have a glitch in your electronics. If you don't have that, then you're going to have a power outage and then you're going to come back. So, you don't have a UPS system, is that correct?
I can't speak specifically to that. That's something that I'd have to talk to the building official and the engineers. There's a lot of other individuals that are involved in the process.
But you understand what I'm talking about, a UPS system?
Yeah.
That's how they prevent computers from going down.
So, the little boxes that go under your computer?
Oh, yeah, we do have those boxes, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not enough to supply all the electronics within the city, the servers and all that stuff. So, a UPS system is a battery bank of cat-five batteries that's, would probably fit the dais right there. The AC goes into it, then there's a converter that comes out that comes out AC. That's where you never end up with an interruption. So, what, the statement that was made earlier, if you have a power outage, you're going to have a power outage, your computer's going to go down and you're going to come back, pretty much, correct? Okay, thank you.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road. I understand we're going to be building more offices on ground level, is that true? Is that, are we moving ahead with that?
If you finish your comments, I'll...
Yeah. My concern is that, one, I don't know if that's FEMA legal, but that's up to you guys, I guess. But my concern also is with the generator, if that's not segregated and you have a short in these offices downstairs on ground level, it's going to short the whole system out. So, it needs to keep segregated from the other power supply going downstairs if you move ahead with that. And the other is, do we really need a generator at the Rec Center to keep the operation of the city going? I don't know if that's really something we should be looking at or maybe selling the old generator.
Madam Mayor, if I may, with regards to the two comments, one, certainly, we would look to make sure that it's installed properly and we don't have any disruption of power in the event that we are on the backup power supply. The concept with respect to utilizing the underground space, that has been discussed, but staff is still in the preliminary phases, and that would have to come back for you for additional discussion because we've had some additional information that may change our perspective on that. With regards to the backup or the generator, as far as selling the generator, in conversations with the building official and the electrician, they said that if you do not utilize that generator and you look to sell it on the market, you're going to get pennies on the dollar as to what it's worth. Probably, maybe 15 to 20 percent of the acquisition cost that the city expended. And so, we thought that instead of losing 30, 40 to 50,000 dollars, that it would be better utilized at the Recreation Center to provide another space for our residents in the event of a, an activation.
And not only that, but we just spent 35,000 to fix it.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion?
No, I'd like to make a motion to authorize, to authorize staff to proceed with the acquisition and installation of the 400-kW three-phase generator at a cost not to exceed, with all the variables built in here, with a cost not to exceed the $340,000.
W, I ask you to kind of amend your motion a little bit there to add that they get bids. That they go out and get bids.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's not in there. That's why I'm saying that it needs to be in your motion. Thank you.
Right, okay.
With the adding to go get bids, I'll second it.
Right, so it should be, I move to authorize staff to proceed with the acquisition and installation of 400-k3 phase generator, subject to competitive bidding at a price not to exceed $340,000.
And I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Andrews?
No.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is compensation and classification study approval.
Madam Mayor and members of the Board of Commissioners, this item before you is seeking authorization to proceed forward with addressing some of the inequities that we identified as part of the compensation and classification study that was conducted by Public Sector's personnel consultants. The consultants were engaged based on a competitive solicitation process that the city of Clearwater embarked upon. The city was successful in piggybacking off of that contract. The contract with the city of Clearwater was the tune of approximately $150,000, and we were able to get them to do our compensation and classification study for under, I believe, $14,000. They surveyed approximately 30 positions, and based on the survey results, it was identified that our market, or we are about 12 percent below market. In order for us to bring our employees that were identified as part of the compensation and classification study up to market, it would cost about $10,000 this fiscal year and then in your next fiscal year, $40,000 to address the compression issues. The Human Resources Department, the City Manager's Office, and the Finance Director have all worked on this particular project, and the Human Resources Coordinator has served as a project manager and has done an excellent job in bringing us to this point. Obviously, we know our employees are our most valuable resource, and so, we want to move forward with addressing the inequities in the compensation structure that we have now, where we would address that in the first pay in June, the first full pay of June. The employees that were identified to be below market would see an increase in their wages, and then the second phase would take effect at the adoption of the budget, which will be October 1. Staff stands prepared to answer any questions that the Board may have. And another bit of good news, and I know the Finance Director's probably not excited that I'm going to say it, but the $40,000 that is projected to see, the projected increase of $40,000 in fiscal year 2020, we received information that our workers' compensation numbers have gone down, and so, it's going to be about a 40-some-thousand-dollar savings to the organization. So, effectively, there's money there to pay for the increase unless we'll all put it somewhere else. But nonetheless, staff is recommending approval of this particular item and stands prepared to answer any questions the Board may have.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question. I'm a little confused on something here. The employees that you identified on this here survey would be the ones that would be getting the increase, correct?
The, yes.
The ones that are highlighted, those positions? My question is, and you may have answered it, and I just was kind of thinking about something else when you were talking, is there any type of retro on this?
There is no retro on this because what we wanted to do is, we, understanding that this is an unbudgeted expenditure, we wanted to get it from this point forward. But one of the things that the Board can feel a little bit comfortable about is that we anticipate bringing folks up to market, then in October, some folks will need to have their compression addressed, so they will see another increase. Then, if the Board decides to do a cost of living and if there's a merit increase conceivably in the next, you know, I would say, next eight to 10-month period, you can see an employee that gets four increases in this time as a result of the study. So, in order to keep the study affordable, since it is an unbudgeted expenditure, it was our recommendation to address it immediately and not bring it forward to the Board in October to address. So, we wanted to take one bite of the apple and then subsequent bites as we move forward because we wanted to make sure we can afford addressing the compensation initiative. If we went to full implementation to include, and if I'm not mistaken, would cost us about $135,000 if we went to full implementation as opposed to the phased approach that we're looking at at this particular moment.
And again, as I indicated back in the workshop, this $10,000 will take care of 16 people. So, 16 people, this amount of money, we're taking care of them in the first step of this process.
And then, the second phase will happen as part of the October 1 budget with the new ranges.
Are they aware of this?
Some of them are aware of it. We're going to communicate it to them after the, hopefully after the Board approves this item, to let them know that the Board has taken some action on it.
Makes some people very happy.
Yeah.
And I was very glad to see today that the workers' comp rates did go down. Our experience mod was at .70, which is very, very good. So, it was good news today, so.
I've got a couple of questions. Why are we only recommending to raise, I'm voting for this because I think our lower-paid people definitely deserve raises. What we found out in that study when I was paying attention is we're very top-heavy. So, we have some people that are overpaid as well. We could pay for this all by just equaling it out, I'm sure, if we actually did the exercise and lowered the wages of the people that are making too much money. You know, this is going to come up budget time, so we might as well start talking about it now, and it could pay for itself. The other thing is, you know, I'm kind of shocked at how much this cost, this 14, where'd the $14,000 come from? Where did we take that out of to pay for this?
I believe...
Are you talking about the $10,000?
No, the $14,000 for the study.
I think that would just come out of, that would come out, that would be a special, come out of the HR.
Okay. Did the Board approve that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm just checking on that. You know, and the other thing, and actually, I showed the Mayor during the break, you know, the one thing I'm really concerned about, other than the fact that, you know, if we have people that are making too much money, we should bring them down so we're not, just keep overpaying people going forward. But this turnover rate, it's crazy alarming to me. 60 percent in 2017, 30 percent in 2018. That's not good, guys. That's not good. So, I mean, hopefully, this extra $10,000 will keep the people we have here, and as we move forward into our next era, we can do a better job of, you know, maintaining our workers.
You know, and Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I know we've mentioned this before, and just quickly, when you do something like this, you want to go from the bottom up. And actually, when some of these positions become vacant, like some of the sanitation workers and some of the garbage collectors, we can't get those people hired fast enough, and we actually have to go to agencies. And so, we end up paying more to those agencies to get the people that we need, which doesn't make good business sense.
And Madam Mayor, one of the things that I would... And Madam Mayor, one of the things that I would caution the board with respect to the reduction in wages, you have the older, the older American Act, and so if you adversely impact individuals over a certain age, you run risk of violating, um, federal law. So if there is a desire to effectively reduce wages, that's something that I would encourage the board to have conversations with legal counsel, or to look to reduce positions versus looking to modify, um, existing wages of employees, just something to consider.
I personally think this is a flawed study because it's based on eight cities, four of which are hugely bigger than we are. And, um, and also it talks about Clearwater in addition, which is another huge city. And I'd rather see a study that compared similar-sized cities.
Madam Mayor, if I may, when we brought this item to the Board of Commissioners, the board provided the cities that we were to survey as part of the, uh, compensation and classification study, and, and the rationale behind was that, so the board can be okay with the comparables. One of the things the consultant provided us is that if somebody has to drive through another city to get to your city, and since they are a competitor, now we can't necessarily play in the same ballpark as them, but nonetheless, um, the, the staff did bring the item before the board to get your blessing on the comparable cities, so we can make sure that there was support, so when we did bring the study to a conclusion, the board can feel like they had some, some input on it.
Well, bigger cities can afford to pay more for, for all positions, just like, in case in point, Riviera Beach can afford to pay more than we can pay, because they have a bigger population. And we're using, like, Pinellas Park, which has fifty-two thousand people in it, that doesn't compare to our city, like, I mean, even close, and Seminole, which is eighteen thousand. I'm all in favor of, of increasing salaries when necessary, but I, I don't think this is a good study.
May I make a comment? We did, the comparators were the city of Bel Air, city of Indian Rocks Beach, city of Pinellas Park, which is larger, but we were looking at the availability and the, how people would go there, the closeness, actually, I guess, the eight to ten miles, okay? The city of South Pasadena, city of St. Pete Beach, and city of Treasure Island, and those were the ones selected, and we based, or the, the company based their criteria on, on using those cities. I think that basically, I guess the reason I was excited about doing it is that in the, since the inception of Madeira Beach, they've never, ever had a salary and compensation study ever, ever done. I mean, every year, I'd sit out there in the audience and, and complain that something needed to be done, and so then somebody would get together and they'd say, well, how are we going to do it? And nothing was, nothing was ever done. So I was very pleased that the salary and compensation study was done, and actually, it verified what I kind of thought it was going to fear of I, that the, that we're training people to go to other cities. We are not getting the best people in this city. We're training cities, and, and that's been the case in, I mean, very often, in, in many different, um, positions. So I felt at first, and I'm sure as somebody that didn't understand maybe as an elected official, what, in, in years past, I now see the importance of doing a, a study of this, of this nature, and it was certainly the first one, you know, that, that we've ever done. I have to agree with you a little bit, okay, on the usage of other cities, but I think there was a reason for, I think there was a reason for doing that, and we kind of justified that. So I, I agree. I, I think that the, um, the, the amount, the, the ten thousand dollars or less than ten thousand dollars right now to fund that, uh, fund that recommendation, and then the additional forty thousand that we have to look at, at budget time, is, is definitely warranted. And I do think the important thing, I guess, is when we are studying those budgets, we really have to make sure that we are staying in line with what our ranges and what our, you know, what, what we said they would be. Thank you.
I'd like to open up for public comment.
Robert Preston, four twenty-five, South Bay Shore. I was here during the gentleman's presentation, and were you here, Maggie? And he explained that a sanitation worker is a sanitation worker is a sanitation worker, no matter what city is it in. It doesn't make any difference whether the city is a five-million-dollar city, or a fifty-million-dollar city, or a two-hundred-million-dollar city. Sanitation worker is a sanitation worker, a truck driver is a truck driver. And just like Ms. Weinstein said, you get these people that are trained to do this, and they're going to go next door because they're making more money. We got, we had good people working for the city, and we end up running them off because we don't pay them worth a damn. That's nuts, especially the low-paid people that actually do all the work. Physical, hard work in ninety, ninety-five-degree humid weather when you sit in your ivory tower and make these decisions, it's wrong. They need that. It's, it's, it's sad that you would even question that these people would not get a raise. The other thing, I've never had an opportunity to bring it up because I've run out of time, but the workman's comp deal that, uh, Mr. Pierce was talking about, in our ordinances, it says thirty-gallon garbage cans, and we're getting some really big ones out there at a lot of these residences. And if you have entries of our sanitation workers or some of these other people, because you allow these fifty-five gallons or fifty-gallon cans that are hard to manage, your compensation costs will go up. Is that true, Mr. Evans?
Yes, that, that's one of the, um, when you look at workers' comp claims, and historically, your sanitation workers are the ones that experience the higher claims, because it's backs, it's hips, it's those types of things.
So some of these people that are well-intended, they put their, they get their trash cans that are this big and high, and they have wheels on them, so they can wheel them out, but our poor guys got to lift them up and put them in the truck. So we really need to give those guys a break and, uh, require our people in our city to limit it to thirty gallons, just to help out the city, and financially, in the end. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Linda Hind, four oh one, Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue. I, I think the study was well-done. I think it's something important, important to consider. Turnover costs a lot, training people costs a lot, the time that you use the people to train other people, all of those are costs. There's also a morale, uh, part of this. When you're paid better, morale is always a little better. It, it's certainly not better when you're paid less than everybody, so, um, but I think it's an important thing, it's also important to say we care about our, our employees. I, I hear, I hear every, every Christmas, people talking about all the, uh, the tips they talk about giving to the sanitation workers, and on next door, it's like, you know, a whole big parade of how much we like the sanitation workers. This is another way to show you care, the citizens care, but I, I think it's important, when I was working, our company did, uh, some of these studies every so often, and it was a much bigger company. But, uh, it's important that people even know that they're working in the range they ought to be, that it's fair and, and just, and, uh, I guess it's just a good thing to do and the right thing to do. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion?
Mayor? Excuse me, I had to put a cough drop in my throat. I move that we move to approve, I move that we approve the staff recommendation and move ten thousand dollars immediately to correct the issues defined in the compensation classification study, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item under contracts and agreements is approval of RFP number nineteen dash two and contract for tree trimming and removal services. Deb?
Good evening. Couple months ago, we, uh, sent out an RFP for the tree trimming services for the city of Madeira Beach. We currently, unfortunately, only received one bid. It happens to be the same company that we've had for about five years. For the last five years, we've also gone out to bid, and they always end up as the lowest bid bidder. So we're very pleased, um, that we'll have Grasshopper again, um, for the next couple, I think it's a three-year contract. Their business is literally right on the other side of the bridge, so when I call because a tree is, a tree limb is down, a tree is dead, he comes within a half an hour and meets me wherever there's a problem. We currently have, uh, have spent ten thousand dollars this year. We allocate twenty thousand dollars a year, so we're right on schedule for this year to spend the twenty thousand dollars for tree trimming, which is mostly palm trees. Um, we have over a thousand palm trees in the city. I'm sure you've seen them, um, the company's Grasshopper. They're, when they come in, we always have them do John's Pass Village, um, before the Fourth of July, before, right before we, um, pressure wash all the brick for the Fourth of July weekend. They're very clean, they're very neat, they're very professional. Wherever they're at, you can't even tell that they've been there. They've, they've always, the owner of the company is always the one trimming, he's a certified arborist. They've been in business for over thirty years. So it's a, it's a win-win for the city and for him.
I was looking at their employee list and their years of experience, and that tells you a lot, because.
Yes.
See, there are four of them with thirty years' experience, one with thirty-five, and two others, one with eighteen and one with twenty. That's, that tells you a lot.
Yeah.
That, that's the same ones that we use where I live, and they've always done an excellent job, and I think, if I'm not wrong, they do most of the public schools in Pinellas County, do they not?
Correct.
Yes, not, most if not all, but.
They do all.
All the public schools.
And they've been doing the public schools for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Yeah, these guys are great. I've dealt with them before, and as long as you put it out for bid, Devin, that's the only one we got back. Goodbye, man.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up for public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Thank you for providing the, um, the insurance thing on that, too, Ms. Lake.
Did we get a motion in a second? We need a motion in a second.
A motion in a second.
I make a motion to, for the approval of RFP number nineteen dash two, contract for tree trimming and removal services.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is Crystal Island Bridge over Crab Key. Mr. Carrier?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Al Carrier with Duell &amp; Associates. Back in April, uh, the BOC awarded the maintenance contract, um, construction contract to M&amp;J Construction for the Crystal Island Road, uh, Bridge Maintenance, um, Contract. Uh, the contract is scheduled to begin on June third. The agenda item before you is, uh, a contract with Duell &amp; Associates for the Construction Administration and Inspection Services. Uh, this contract before you is similar to the contract that Duell &amp; Associates provided for the Bogus Yega Project, Rex Place, in a Hundred Thirty-seventh Avenue Circle. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Carrier, I think we spoke about this one time before, but, uh, you'll be doing the roadwork out there eventually, but you're going to do the bridge first, you're going to do whatever needs to be done to the bridge. Wouldn't that be kind of contradictory, what we're doing here? Because we'll be moving heavy equipment across the bridge to get to the other roads there.
Sure, and, uh, um, in the report that came back from DOT with, about the bridge, they, they did an analysis. The bridge is in, um, very good condition. All the work that's being done is maintenance items, um, some concrete is spalding, so the contractor will go back there and fix that. The bridge deck is going to be resurfaced, um, pressure washed and restriped. The, there's a, a bridge abutment that needs to be fixed, there's spalding concrete on it. So there's nothing really structurally wrong with the bridge, it's just ongoing maintenance that's going to be conducted. We don't foresee any problems with the construction equipment going over the Crystal Island Bridge to get to the, the Crystal Island roadway, to, to service that and, and do the construction work for that, for that project.
I just hate to see damage done to the bridge once it's, you know, fixed up with the road, roadwork that's going to be going on there shortly afterwards, because then we'd have to go back and redo the bridge again.
We, we don't anticipate any, any damage being done, um, with the Crystal Island roadway project. If there is, um, that's why we do have construction inspectors on site to monitor that, and then we would put it back on the contractor who did the damage to the bridge to go back and fix it at their cost.
So basically, right now, it's just cosmetic, everything that's going to be done. Because another bridge was built back in two thousand and six, so it's not that old.
And the, the work that's contemplated here is only ninety days, so.
Thank you.
Hey, Al, I, I got a couple of questions. Hold on. Eric, can you? Please give one to Al, too, because I, I just want to address this with him so we can stand. Thank you. Everybody good? Al, you know I love you, okay, but I, I just got to bring this up because, you know, I had a, a conversation, I, I went online and I kind of did some, did some homework on this, and, um, I'm just a little bit concerned with this and then the, the following projects that we have coming forward, so, and I don't mean to pick on this one because I think we've already approved this one and the services that are with it. But on the second page, you know, this CCNA thing kind of scares me, um, because it does look like we are going four pages in a row here of approving a contract with you and not putting this out to, as a public agency, putting this out to, you know, the CCNA, which is, what is it? Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, right? I, I, I don't know. If, if we're not violating something, I, I, I hope somebody can tell me that I'm wrong on this, but I just want to make sure that we're touching all the bases. I mean, you do work here a couple of days a week in the office, it could be conceived as, uh, we're kind of shooting work your way, and we're not opening this up to the other contractors and the other, uh, engineers that we have that are working for the city. So, you know, again, you know I love you, um, I love working with you, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't need to get our names in the paper anymore for not dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and I'll turn it over to you guys.
Certainly, I understand. Um, we've been an engineer record along with CPWG for the last, I think, six years, seven years. When we originally applied for the engineer record, I believe, um, CPWG was already an engineer record seven years ago. The city of Madeira Beach solicited four additional firms and, um, Duell &amp; Associates and CPWG, back in two thousand and thirteen, I believe it was, uh, were the two firms that both, the city council at the time selected both of us to do continuing service. at the time selected both of us to do continuing services. The engineer of record terms had expired and I believe it was about a year and a half or two years ago, the city advertised again. The only two responding firms were, again, both CPWG and Duell &amp; Associates. The purpose of having an engineer of record, typically you'll see with bigger cities where they'll have a gamut of different engineers that can do different varieties of work. The city is, your city's rather small. We kinda have a niche with what we do, CPWG's the same way, they have a niche with what they do with public works, projects in smaller municipalities, that's primarily our, our background, that's what we do, roadway projects. And that's why I believe we were selected. During the course of, of our tenure here, we've been asked to assist with plan review services, so that is primarily my role here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We review plans, bigger plans, that would, more complex plans on a civil engineering level. With that, there's been some other services that we've been requested to do, for instance, the FEMA mitigation grants, we're asked to monitor those. That was probably four or five years ago under Mr. Mrs. Rosetti's direction. So we were handling the payments and correspondence with, with those projects. So that makes up my Tuesdays and Thursdays here. Lately, there's been a, a void in the public works department without the public works director. Mr. Evans had asked me to, to try to keep some of the projects moving along. There's a, there was a laundry list of those projects, some of them very, very small, like point repair projects for stormwater, collapsed stormwater pipe, going out and looking at sinkholes and that sort of thing. So we kinda filled that void until you're able, you guys were able to bring another person in. The, um, the reason for the, the engineer of record contract is so that you don't go out, you don't have to go out and solicit, that you had already selected engineer qualified to do the work that needs to be done within the city. So typically what happens is you guys will, municipality will have a project, the project, you, you have a description, you have an idea what the project needs, what needs to happen with the project, and you typically would select the firm that you think is most qualified. Once that selection is made, the city manager or whoever may be staff would select the engineering firm and then they would start the negotiations with, with the fees that would be required to get the job done. If you can't come to the negotiation, if you can't come to an agreement with the fees, then the municipality has a right to say, "Look, we don't wanna use you guys, we're gonna go after the second or second best qualified engineering firm that we have under our engineer of record contract." With that, we've, I think we've done a substantial amount of work, yes, in the city over the last seven years, most of it's been roadway projects. Again, that's our, that's our bread and butter, that's what we do, that's what we would like to do, and I, I believe we're, we're pretty efficient at doing it. I don't know how else to answer your question.
Oh, no, I, you know, I, I just, is CPWG still a, what did you call it?
Engineer of record with the city.
Engineer of record with the city, okay. Me personally, I would feel more comfortable if we split some of this up, you know, and just so, I, I, I think a system of checks and balances is always a good idea. I don't wanna take business away from you, I like you, Al, I, I just, reading this scares me a little bit, this is a statute. And if we are not putting this out and we're not following the rules here, I don't know, are, are we putting ourselves in a really bad spot that somebody could come down the road and say, "Hey, wait a minute, why did we just award all these contracts?" I mean, because we're starting to talk about pretty big numbers here as we're going forward on this. And, you know, I, it's a, you know, you're right, we are a small city, for us to swallow 15 or 20 million dollars, and I really haven't done all the math on this to see where all that adds up, but I, I would just, I, I would just be more comfortable if, you know, I don't know, anybody else have a feeling on this? I, I just, I pointed this out only because this, this kinda made me nervous when we're talking about the numbers.
May I add one more comment? For instance, the Parsley Road project that's before you tonight, that really started last summer as an emergency project that we've been trying to get, we've been trying to get a contractor on board, we advertised it. That's something that's, that we started with, we, we put that out to bid for the city, I think, last June or July, and it's just now coming under contract. We couldn't get a, it was bid, the, the contractor that bid it, it came in twice or two and a half times more than what was anticipated through the engineer's estimate. We've been working on the Parsley project for quite some time. We're just at the point now where we have construction services, we've been working on it for about a month and a half, two months consistently, and at the discretion of the finance director, he said, "Let's put this before the commission so that they can see what's going on, where the money's going." It's the same thing with the Crystal Avenue Bridge. We got the report the end of last year, I believe, in November, December. The city manager asked us if we could put together an RFP to see if we can get the contractor out there to, to build it. So we assisted with putting the specifications together, we put together the bid package and we assisted the city in the bid package. And then now we're at the point where we, where whoever hits the road, we need to get an inspector out there to oversee that, that project.
One more thing, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. In regarding to grants with, with SWIFTMUD, we, even though some of our SWIFTMUD, stormwater projects have been completed, we are still obligated to prepare reports to comply with some of that SWIFTMUD funding that we received on previous stormwater projects, and Al has been helping us prepare those reports and making sure we're in compliance.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we did go through a competitive solicitation process to obtain two engineers of record, CPWG and Duell &amp; Associates. CPWG is handling some very large projects for the city, the resurfacing of Gulf Boulevard as well as the undergrounding of the utilities, so they have a lot of work that they're working on as Mr. Carrier's firm will be working on some other work. So depending on what the issue and the skill set, we've made it a point to, to separate the work. So when you look at the, the volume of those projects that both firms will be working on, it's pretty, pretty consistent that not one firm gets all the work and what have you. But we did go through a competitive solicitation process that this board actually approved.
I'll open up for public comment.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. Gulf Boulevard, just a question. It seems like they wasted a hell of a lot of money, restriping, putting those reflectors up on something that they gotta put another layer of asphalt on. That's beyond me why they would do that. I've never seen that done before. They usually put those floppy things.
To be honest, I can't answer that, it's, it's not my project.
Yeah, good one. Push it off to somebody else. But I thought it was a state road.
It is.
And you just said your project is Gulf Boulevard, so I'm, I'm confused here.
I'll allow for you to...
Let me finish my other stuff so you can respond. Now, the other thing, Al, I understand you do a really good job, but a couple of weeks ago, you got some complaints about your guys on 137th pumping underneath your screen and over the top of the screen. That was me. Because I ended up with milky water and flour on top of the water on my side of that inlet. That's unacceptable, period, no matter where it is, anywhere. If they need to put anchors out to hold that silk screen out, then they need to do that. And they don't need to be pumping underneath it. It's unacceptable, period. And going through all the complaints and talking to the people, you're responsible for that, correct?
Actually, that's not true. The contractor's responsible under his own PDS permit, I'm the engineer. On both of your complaints, we called in, somebody called into Pinellas County, so we had documentation. Both times Pinellas County was out there, they were in compliance with, with the dewatering. There, it is construction. Sometimes you're gonna get blowouts, there's, there's nothing you can do, they're fighting high tide trying to get pipe in the ground.
It wasn't blowout, Al, you know that, it was poor management of the silk screen, period. I, I watched it, I filmed it. It's, it's plain and simple. And that needs to be done appropriately. Our intercoastal is what we rely on for people here in this community, and we need to keep it clean. So that's just my comment about that.
Can you send me that video?
Um, yeah.
Said you had a video, if you could send it to me, I would, I would like to push that on.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, the silk screens are for a reason. My wife works for Pinellas County in Storm Drange Department. It's supposed to be out there, not to go under, not to go over, it's there for a reason. Thank you. There was one other, that was an argument, I can't picture, let's see. The what? Yeah. It's the OF syndrome, old fart, sorry.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion about Crystal Island Bridge over Crab Key? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, not sure how to word it though, to approve the construction work over the Crystal Island Bridge, or the Crystal Island Bridge over Crab Key. Would that be sufficient there?
And I'll second that. Did you make the, you made the motion, didn't you, Commissioner?
Yes, I did. I wasn't sure how to word it, but, okay.
And I'll second the motion, right. The Crystal Island Bridge over Crab Key.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
Any more discussion? City clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Ready? Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next we have Crystal Island roadway improvements, professional surveying, engineering and permitting services. Mr. Carrier?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a follow-up to the neighborhood meeting that we had with the residents out in Crystal Island. They're wanting to move forward with the roadway improvement projects. Then there was a work session that we had where we had talked about three separate areas within the city that are in need of roadway projects. This is the first one that's gonna be coming before you. If you remember, the, the roadways are Crystal Drive, Lilian, Flamingo Drive and Johns Pass. We had talked about doing a stopgap measure to mill and resurface Crystal Drive. I have talked to some of the residents on Crystal Drive, and I'll be honest with you, they had some apprehension that the project was gonna move forward and they had requested that if the project doesn't move forward by the scheduled date of January 2020, that you all possibly put something in the recommendation that, that they'll go ahead and, that you, the city commissioner will move forward in getting the, the roadway mill and resurfaced on, on Crystal. I assured them that if it was to be approved, that our deadline to have construction plans done would be September, October, so that we can go ahead and advertise and come before you again with the contractor bids prior to January so that we can have a January start date. The purpose of the project is to correct the structural problems of the roadway, replace the curb and gutter, and then replace any of the failing utilities. Within this contract, basically, it's turnkey for, for the city from now till the bidding process with Duell &amp; Associates. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I have a question. Since the city has been so negligent for so many years in not doing any, you know, major infrastructure improvements, and I certainly am number one for going forward on this, but I've been thinking a lot about the, whatever you use, I guess, to, to show you how bad the streets are, how bad, not the streets, but under the streets are, okay? Because, you know, everybody seems to think this is just gonna be a panacea and it's just gonna be marvelous, and there's a whole lot of work because the major thing is not the asphalt or the pervious or the impervious, it's the, it's what's underneath, it's how the trucks have been running down for 50 years or 60 years and ruining all the pipes and everything underneath it. And it's similar perhaps to the only thing that has been done, which was on Normandy. So I'm just concerned, or I guess I'm just asking for your input, okay, on, from your experience maybe in this, not necessarily doing the work, but consulting the work, how would, when we say our streets are in 1 through 10 order, 1 being the best, okay? Is that, is that type of thing, is that survey or whatever conducted for the base part of the street? Or are you, do you have some way of knowing what's underneath that asphalt?
So, so there's different evaluation methodologies. Some are strictly based on the evaluation of the asphalt itself, whether it's cracked, it's wearing, if it's showing aggregate, then there's certain things you can do to rejuvenate that street. And in other cases, like out on Lilian and Crystal, there's actually structural damage, structural failure with the roadway itself. Some of it is, is because of collapsed pipes in the past and they, the, the pipe will leak, the, the structural soil that holds up the roadway will leak it and cause potholes and or dips. Other, other cases were that the, the curb has sunk over the years because of the poor soils that are out there. So the, there's a holistic approach, my point is, there's a holistic approach that when we go out there, we look at everything. We look at the condition of the pipes, we look at the failing infrastructure, if it's water or sanitary sewer, if those are the causes of, of the road failure, or if it's a structural failure also. Out on Lilian, Crystal, the rest of those roads out there, they're experiencing all of that. Because the roads were built 60 years ago, they're experiencing every type of failure there is. So in our contract, and we did Normandy also several years ago, that's why it's important that we coordinate with the, with, with Pinellas County Utilities to make sure that they're gonna look at their pipes, their, their sanitary sewer pipes are gonna be lined. If the water distribution system's old, we need to get them to go ahead and replace that before we go ahead and rebuild the road. There's certain measures that we take, we just went out there, if you remember at the work session, I had mentioned that we got a geotech out there to look at the roadways and give us core samples to see if it would perk to work with pervious pavement. We found out it doesn't perk, there's a high water table out there. So that's gonna designate different types of designs that were, it's gonna actually restrict us to certain types of, of roadway designs that will work out in that environment. So those are all things that we're gonna look at as we move forward.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to build on Mr. Carrier's comments, we had a conversation with the county administrator who visited us here on site and communicated our desires to move forward with this project, and the assistant county administrator assured us that money is set aside for roadway projects such as this to be able to address both the wastewater and water infrastructure. So once we, you know, are moving forward with this particular project, the county will be placed on notice that we are anticipating them going in there and improving their infrastructure prior to us going in there and doing the roadway construction. But our intent is to move forward, like Mr. Carrier said, by January 2020. One of the things, if the board is to move forward with approving this item, I certainly think the board should consider amending the motion to say, in the event that there is a delay in excess of 30 days or what have you of that January 2020, or 15 days or something like that, that we would go forward with the stopgap measure that was communicated to the residents. We've also scheduled a community meeting with the residents of Crystal Island. I believe that's gonna be next week, Thursday, at 6:30 here in the board chamber. So we're, we're prepared and ready to move forward and Mr. Carrier's assured me that he'll have everything in place so we don't have to have that stopgap measure. But nonetheless, I think to provide some assurance to the residents, they would like to see that incorporated in the actual action that the board takes this evening.
You know, I, I understand that we did make, you know, obviously a commitment was made to the residents, but I also think that it's, it's really, it behooves us also to, to recognize that this is the first time we're doing anything like that in the history of Madeira Beach. of Madera Beach, you know, and that we do have to somehow, I guess, convey that we made a mistake. I mean, you know, we said it wrong. How much, how much did we say in time and in dollars would that stopgap put us away from our realistic goal?
The stopgap measure, the projected cost to mill and resurface Crystal Drive and Flamingo is, or Lilian, is it Lilian? Cr- Crystal and Flamingo would be about $225,000 and would take approximately about 90 to 120 days to, to complete.
So, what you're suggesting is if, if we go really behind schedule?
If, if for whatever reason, some unforeseen circumstance, that there's some assurance to the residents that we will be able to move forward with the milling and resurfacing. And at that particular time, I think Mr. Carrier will be far enough in the roadway design that if he needed to move forward with that, it would be a, a lot quicker deployment of construction staff to, to get that roadway milled and resurfaced. But I anticipate that we'll be able to, to meet the mark that we, we set. And with the new, with the information that's been provided us, the roadway will actually be completed a year before what the projected number was when we met with the residents the first time.
And I have a question on your fiscal impact. The last sentence in that paragraph is incomplete.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I apologize for that. It really should have had a period at the end of engineering costs. That was just, something was overlooked in, during the review. Would like to make a comment. The $15 million RFP bank loan is progressing. Good information from the financial advisor that, that interest rates, he's still seeing rates decreasing. So, the projected costs, you know, is, is, is again, more, even more favorable than the last time we talked about this. So, again, we're, we're hitting this at the right time.
Well, on that note, how are we going to pay for this? So, our $15 million bank loan is going to cost us, what, $1,200,000, $1,300,000 a year?
Well, there was two options that our financial, and I'm glad you brought that up, because we had, I, I had this discussion with him the other day. He floated the two scenarios of, of a 15-year and versus, versus a 20-year, and when you look at the rates and with the rates decreasing, the 20-year loan is, is more advantageous as far as when you size up the rates and the payments. And again, the way our financial advisor explained this is when we have the, this, this money, we are, we are getting the trade-off between the interest date earned and versus the interest expense. And so, there's a trade-off there to the point where we're able to use, utilize this money with not paying that much of interest expense.
No, I got, I got you. I get, I guess my, my question again is, at 1, 2, or 1, 3 a year, that's $100,000 roughly a month, let's just use a round number, where are we pulling that number from? Where are we, where are we coming up with that additional $100,000 to pay down this bank loan? I mean, I, you know, I guess we could, I mean, we can't just keep raising parking rates.
Well, the transfer, that's a good point. The transfer does come, the, the transfers to pay, pay the debt, some of the debt does come from the general fund. This would be stormwater in, in the stormwater fund. So, when we get this money, it'll, that's where it will reside. So, the money will basically come from additional revenue that we get from stormwater collection, and the fund is very healthy at this point in time. So, the revenue that we have generating in that fund will help pay off that, that, that payment each year.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, also, one of the things that we're doing is we're not going to be borrowing the 15 million in its entirety. We're going to be drawing down the money necessary for the project. So, if the final cost estimates come back at $5 million, but we only need 1.5 million for fiscal year 2020, and 3 million for fiscal year 2022, that's the money that we will draw, and that's the money that we would pay the debt service payment on. The bank will reserve that $15 million in the event that we need to utilize it. But let's say we go through all our in, infrastructure, roadway infrastructure, and make improvements, and it's only $10 million, the debt service would only be $10 million versus us being on the hook for a $15 million bank note and having the money best, basically sitting in the bank. We would actually draw down what we need versus that entire large sum.
Yeah, that, that is a great feature that we think we will have available. That is a great feature.
I'll open for public comment now. Public comment is closed.
I got my question answered. The interest rate stays the same when you make the contract?
And the, the interest rate, we're going to lock in the interest rate as well as no prepayment penalties either. So, if we get a windfall, or we have extra cash on hand that we want to pay it down sooner, that's one of the things we're asking for as well.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road. Just a quick question, because I haven't been to the meetings on the road, but are you going to do any raising of Flamingo and Crystal down there where we get a lot of flooding? Is it coming up a couple of inches, or?
That's something we're going to look at, and that's the purpose of the neighborhood meeting. I need to get the residents, I need to get in front of them, to not only look at where their, their flooding issues on the road that I'm not aware of. We have been engineer record, like I mentioned, for about seven years, and I collect all the complaints that I can. But ideally, I need to sit down face-to-face and talk to residents about stuff like, they occasionally have sewer backups. And when we've done other projects, sometimes you can isolate it to three or four houses in a row, and it may be a collapsed pipe they're having issues with. Those are the things I want to know. Flooding, anywhere there's sinkholes between people's home, if there's a pipe, an outfall pipe going between their homes, those are the things, that's the information I need before we even get started on the design. So, yes.
The other thing was, the city doesn't have right-of-way from the streets going out to the canals where the storm sewer runs. Hopefully, we're getting with all those homeowners ahead of time and ironing out problems. I know, I live on Normandy, and, and I know there were some issues there where one or two homeowners just didn't want the city in their yard for any reason. So, just.
Correct. And luckily, we, we were able to resolve those issues. Once we showed the homeowners the video and the condition of the pipe, they ended up letting us go in there and.
Yeah, I know, I know Normandy was a little bit of a buzzsaw. Thank you.
Public comment is now closed.
Well, Mayor, I would like to make a motion, if there's no more other, if there's no other comments, a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners recommends, the Board of Commissioners approve the Crystal Island roadway improvements, professional surveying, engineering, and permitting services with Duell and Associates for $319,500. And, okay, I don't need to talk about the stopgap at this time, because this is strictly your, your services.
Do we have a second?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, please. May I just see if I need to include that?
I, well, I told the neighbors that I would approach you with, with their request was, because they had, in the past, had written letters that said that their roadway's going to be repaid by a certain date, and it never happened. So.
I don't want to. Okay, yes. Motion to, I mean, I move to approve the Crystal Island roadway improvements, professional surveying, engineering, and permitting services with Duell and Associates for $319,500.
Second. Any more discussion from the commission? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry for the pause here. I believe the next item is the Parsley Stormwater Project, but I don't see it in my packet. Oh, I'm, there it is. It was buried. Okay. So, that is the next, the next subject.
Mayor Commissioners, Al Carrier, again, in essence of time, this is identical to the Crystal Island Road, Bridge Construction Services contract. It's for Duell and Associates to oversee the administration inspection services for the Parsley Stormwater roadway project. I know some residents have been asking what the status is. Within that project, we had sliplined three pipes, those being on 144th and 145th Avenue. We anticipate Steve's excavating, doing the intersection work, probably starting in about a month. So, you'll see them in the intersection of Parsley.
Any discussion?
The only thing I'll say, you know, I, I still think we should be spreading these out a little bit more between our, our engineers, but, you know, just my opinion. Oh, I'm sorry, that we should be following the CCNA guidelines and spreading these out a little bit more amongst our engineers. We don't currently have a, any undergrounding going on as far as I know, right? So, to say CPWG has that and working on that, I don't think that that's accurate.
Yeah, CPWG does have the undergrounding, and they have the resurfacing.
Are, are we doing undergrounding currently?
Yes, we're, we're doing both those projects. The road resurfacing is 1.9 million, and the undergrounding is another million. So, that's, that's three, that's 2.9 million right there that that, that, that engineer is overseeing.
Okay, where, where are we doing the undergrounding?
Phase two of the undergrounding is, is, is ongoing.
The boring crews are out there along Gulf Boulevard.
Okay.
From County Park.
That answers my question.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Parsley Stormwater Project for the Construction Administration Services.
Nice.
Second. Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is Johns Pass Village conceptual, conceptual design services. Mr. Carrier?
Mayor Commissioners, with me tonight is Chris Ineskevitz with Placemaker Design Studios. If you remember back at a work session in February, we started, we had a discussion and presentation about the pedestrian corridor, specifically just on Village Boulevard, and we talked about what we could do with the planners and changing those to sit walls, enhancing the landscaping, implementing some pavement designs and lights. Since then, the commission members had an opportunity to walk the village with city staff, and as a result of that, that walk, or that little field trip that we had, both staff and the commission had identified additional items that they wanted to be addressed. Some of those items included improvements of the parking along Parsley, excuse me, not Parsley, Pelican Lane, improving the pedestrian access along Pelican Lane, providing possibly gateway improvements at 131st and 129th as you enter into the Boulevard, the Village, Johns Pass Village area. There was requests for looking at a possible public plaza, a public plaza concept with a, a yard or a lawn, and then taking a holistic approach for the entire village area. In your packet, in the last page, there's an exhibit in there that shows the extent of the areas that want, that wanted to be addressed. If you see that, it's the aerial with the hatches. So, from the original scope of just looking at Village Boulevard and enhancing just the Boulevard itself, the scope of the work here has, has expanded exponentially. This direct, this project will be directed by this community development department, Mrs. Portell and, and Mrs. Rowan. In the conceptual design contract, there's provisions in there for public meetings, and the purpose of that is to gain input from not only the business owners, but the general public. There's slated for three, three meetings to get their input. We want them to have the buy-in before we move forward. And with that, if you have any questions, we're, we're here to answer those for you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the funding associated with this particular endeavor would be funding that we would utilize as part of the infrastructure monies that we are looking to secure as part of the bank note. So, I did want to inform the board that money is being set aside in that overall amount to be able to move forward with looking at the areas that articulate the scope of the, the project.
Mayor, I would just like to comment that it was way more than I expected when we started it out. I envisioned phase one to be, you know, seating those sit walls and the, the trash cans, and certainly lighting could be a portion of that. Hardscapes, I wasn't thinking, oh, hardscapes, you mean, pavers and the paving and all that, okay? I wasn't thinking of, of that at all, except in the area that we have determined by your survey, that the city is the property owner from, on Village Boulevard, from things, et cetera, north to the, the bamboo. What I did envision, and I didn't see it in here, although it might be in here, that after that, okay, that the second thing would be, and I looked, I read it many times, okay, so I got a good feeling for it, and I think it's, you know, a lot of it is certainly very meritable. But I do think that one of the areas that we didn't talk about was the opening again of, after identifying on the survey, that the city property was used for other purposes, other than the street going in front of the bamboo out to the Gulf Boulevard. I've noticed over the years, you know, the amazing amount of traffic that has to, that has no way to get out, okay? That if they don't use 130th to get out, that they've got to turn around in that bamboo area. And I think that's a point of, of real safety, and, you know, when we planned the initial part of this, okay? I, I wasn't thinking, although it certainly is a wonderful idea, and I know that public and tourists and stuff would certainly buy into the idea of, of plazas and pots and things like that. I'm hoping that we look at the most important area first, which is providing a night, providing a better experience in Johns Pass Village with the seating walls and with the seating walls, and the landscaping, and the trash things, and, and also some lighting. And then the second thing be the area that the city does own, and take that, take that back. We've got to make that roadway, we've got to make that. It's for safety also, you know, it's not just traffic and stuff, it's emergency vehicles, you know, when the village is just packed, you, you've got to realize that. And then the, the only other area that I was commenting on right now is the Pelican Lane, which certainly, we've had so many. which certainly, we've had so many comments on that from so many citizens and business people, and everybody, all of us, have been talking about that for so many years. I think that that part of it, certainly before anything is done at all, before any planning is done at all, there has to be a buy-in from the property owners that their back property abuts Pelican Lane. Because I think it's very well that the city certainly wants to improve that property too. But some of that property that is being used by the property owners for 20, 30 years, okay, is city property, and we have to acknowledge that, we have to do something about it. We've got to make it our responsibility. But for the adjacent property owners, which their property rights abuts us, we have to have the buy-in. So I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I think it's a wonderful project. I think we need to, I think that we do need to move on it, but I think that we need to be very cautious that we identify and do those priority things to make the experience a better one in Johns Pass Village, and then phase in the other things as years go on, which I'm sure you're, you know, I'm sure that this allows for that anyway.
Well, it looks like a good project, very ambitious. And I think it'd be a good thing for Johns Pass Village. Discussion from the commission?
Floor is open for public comment. Floor is closed. Do we have a motion?
I have a question before we go on that. Where do we go from here? Where do we start from here, Mr. Carrier, when we approve this proposal for the design services? Where do we go after here?
The first part is meeting with city staff, putting together a couple conceptual designs that look at the entire village holistically, from everything, from deliveries, the uses that people have in the public right of way, hardscape, landscape, looking at alternative parking. And this isn't something that's going to be implemented when we come up to conceptual design, it's something that's not going to be implemented immediately. It's obviously something we're going to have to work towards and give the city some sort of map on how to proceed. A lot of the elements can be constructed right after we get done with the conceptual drawing, but there are other aspects, like for instance on Pelican Lane, there's a need for additional parking out there. So the city's going to need to find some additional parking for those residents and those business owners. But we need some sort of map to get us there. So the first part of this is to start with conceptual drawings. We'll come back before the city staff have discussions and then start with the public meeting request. Once we get input from the public meetings, we'll go ahead and put those into drawings. Again, it's another iteration, we'll see what works, what doesn't work, and then have another meeting with the public and the business owners. And eventually, we'll get to a conceptual design that works for everybody, or most everybody.
But why can't we start, and maybe I just think too small, but why can't we start with what was the original intent? And that was to start to provide, I guess. I guess I'm just anxious to get about with not the pavement or the parking and the... I'm anxious for it to look better. The original intent was, we had, really, I mean, the benches and the other stuff, they're rusted. Some of them rusted so bad that people can just fall right through them. And I'm thinking of the, I guess, a smaller, certainly a smaller project than what, when I read this so many times, I'm thinking that I wanted the benches to be built into those seating arrangements so that it would be cleaner in the village, and it would be. That the trash cans would be built into those beds, those flower bed-like things, and it would provide more room for people to move around. It would be a better pedestrian thing, there's more room for people to move around because there wouldn't be benches there. So I guess I wasn't thinking of something as long range. I don't know what y'all were, you know, maybe...
Can I add?
Thinking...
We had originally submitted a proposal to the city manager for doing just what you wanted originally, which was the seat walls and improvements just on Village Drive. Then we had the meeting out in the field. And then we kind of took everybody's collective thoughts and put those together, thinking that that was the direction that you all wanted to go, and that you wanted to look at it holistically down there, and trying to address some of the longstanding issues that have been going on down there. So that's why in your packet, there's two proposals. One was the original proposal, and the second one was the enhanced proposal to try and address everybody's issue that was at least conveyed to us.
Okay, then do we have to, okay, then I guess my rule question is, is if we go ahead and make the approval on this, how soon, for instance, could we start with Phase One? I mean, do we have to go through the whole thing again to, before we do, you know, the sitting wall and the initial improvements? Do we have to wait till we go through and have all these different shirets and everything for everything before we start with the initial project?
I do think it would be advisable to go through the entire process to develop that vision so you have a holistic vision that can carry throughout the design. Just with respect to the seat walls. I've been out to the site and I've walked the site. So if we were to install some seat walls, that most likely would disrupt the current pavers. We'd have footings, so we would have to then install some new pavers. But the pavers there are very faded, so then you end up with this patchwork of new pavers and old pavers. So just that step itself is fairly disruptive. And I think that sort of would lead to you wanting to redesign the paver pattern and come up with something that gave it a fresh look versus a patched look.
May I pitch in here? You know, I hate budget amendments. I think that we build a budget for a reason and we kind of go with that, and we're coming into budget season. This isn't mission critical, we don't have to spend this money right now or approve this money right now. But I would like to see us work, and nobody wants the village, I love Johns Pass, and nobody wants the village cleaner and better looking than I do. I promise I will spend as much money as we can, but I'd like it to be budgeted. I don't like doing budget amendments. I don't like a series of budget amendments being thrown at us at the end of the year. And you'll hear me say this 100 times while I'm up here, I just, I think we've got to work within our budgets. I think we've been going outside of them, and we're right here. Over the last couple of hours, we've been spending a lot of money. And I think we've got to see where we are first before we start. I mean, $121,000 here, $319,000 here, more money here. Guys, I think we've got to be a little bit fiscally responsible if we're going to pay down some of these loans and pay down some of these debts. And I think we can work this into a budget next year, but we're going to start budget hearings coming up soon. I don't think it's anything we can't hold off for a couple of weeks or a couple of months in order to try to plug into a budget.
I'll open it for public comment at this time. Comment is closed.
I agree with Mr. Andrews that we hold off on it.
I don't want to hold off on the seating walls and on the other because it's something that's really necessary. I think that maybe we should, well, maybe we should just postpone it a little while, but there is a need for it, there's just not the need, I guess, to go into as enhanced a vision as this is, okay?
But all this is doing is just paying for a design service at this point. We're not doing anything, we're not, no new benches, no nothing, other than just designing something. So I agree that we hold off till the next budget.
And as much as I think it's a great project, I agree that we should probably hold off. I mean, and as you said, if we start just doing the one part of it, then it's not going to flow because you're going to have disruptions with the pavers and things like that. So we should either do it all at once and do it when we know we can afford it in the budget.
May I add one comment, and I appreciate the comments we're receiving. There were three areas identified for stormwater and roadway improvements. One was Crystal, one was Marguerite and Parsley, and the other is the village. So before we proceed with doing anything down in the village with rebuilding the roads and curbs and looking at the infrastructure on Village and Parsley, I believe that this conceptual design process needs to be vetted before we move forward. I don't want to go ahead and come before you, or another engineering firm come before you and rebuild Parsley and rebuild Village only to find out that a year later that you all decide that, you know, you want another look out there. You want a holistic look, you want somebody to look at the traffic patterns and the pedestrian walkways. I appreciate that you want to delay it, and that's fine. But just keep that in mind that as the projects keep coming, at least for that area, that this really needs to be looked at at some point.
Maybe we should hold off just until we get into our budget and look at it with the overall, since we've been pretty overwhelmed with some of these other things. So maybe it's not something that we should, well, we can bring it back up again.
Well, and what we can do is, if it's the board's pleasure, we can look to take the proposal and break it down into certain sections to where you're not swallowing the $121,000 at one particular segment, but starting the process, because there's funds that are being requested as part of the overall capital bank note that we're going for to be able to put dollars behind this particular project. And one of the concerns that we have is the longer we delay things and kick the proverbial can down the road, invariably the costs continue to escalate and the infrastructure continues to deteriorate. And if we're going to make this a area that we've all said that is a vital commercial hub in Madeira Beach, in order to remain relevant, we have to start doing something to address some of the issues that are there because it definitely does look dated and it needs to be spruced up. So we can break down the proposal and see if there's some things that the board would allow for us to move forward. But I think one of the biggest things, before we go any further, is we've got to get the buy-in from the community members and the businesses, and I think that would help carry the momentum. So if there's something that we would like from the staff standpoint is to engage those folks in having those conversations about what do we want Johns Pass to look, feel like, and operate as, and then assigning the capital dollars as part of the budget process. Because this is not a project, this is not a process that's going to happen overnight. There's a lot of work associated with it. So if the board would be so inclined, allow for me and Mr. Carrier to go back and work with our consultants in planning and zoning, or the community development department to break it up kind of in phases. As I said, this is what we anticipate, you know, maybe this fiscal year, next fiscal year, what have you, and bring you back something that's a little bit more palatable and you can roll it into, you know, future budgets or what have you. But at least to start some momentum, so progress.
That's what I would like. I think that it just seems, yeah, it just seems a little bit overwhelming with all the other projects, but I too want to see it better. But it is, I mean, and I think it's important to get opinions and, you know, thoughts from some other people. But I think that we should do that, break it down.
I think that's a good idea, and go forward also and have community meetings to help break it down.
Thank you, City.
All right, we will make some modifications and bring this item back for future consideration.
All right, next we're onto new business, five-year disaster agreement between the city of Madeira Beach and Seminole United Methodist Church to allow the city to occupy and use designated areas of the church parking lots and building for the purpose of maintaining a secondary headquarters during disaster periods, which meant necessarily the evacuation of its primary headquarters in Madeira Beach. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is basically just a renewal of a previous five-year contract that we had that allows us to use the property and the building there at the Seminole United Methodist Church. And basically, it's a last resort effort during disaster operations. It's an area of high ground that allows us a place to park our vehicles to do emergency operations back here in the city.
Any discussion? Public comment? Public comment closed, any more discussion?
I'll make a motion that we just go ahead and approve the disaster agreement with Seminole United Methodist Church.
I'll second.
Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next we have Resolution 2019-08, Emergency Operations Plan. Chief?
Yes, ma'am, this is our emergency operation plan. It's basically reviewed and renewed every year. It's been evaluated and updated by all the city's staff. And it basically just outlines our emergency operations during disaster-type situations.
Any discussion? Motion?
Yes, I move to approve the Emergency Operations Plan 2019-2020, the new five-year agreement.
One second.
Oops, yeah.
Sorry.
I need to read the resolution by title first.
Oh, okay.
Resolution 2019-08, the resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for amendments to the city of Madeira Beach Emergency Operations Plan and providing for an effective date.
Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 2019-08. Ms. Portell is not here.
She just walked out. She is...
Oh, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if we can skip to item E and have Mr. Price present that item, because he's in the box, so he probably, so we can... Yes.
Item E for ordinance 2019-10.
And Madam Clerk, if you can read the ordinance title.
Ordinance 2019-10, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending city code, chapter 2, article 1, division 1, section 2.1, official city seal and logo, providing for city logo, providing for authorized use of city logo, providing for prohibited use of city logo, providing effective dates, providing for separability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Kirk Price, our public information specialist for the city of Madeira Beach, working with the city clerk and the city attorney on the existing ordinance that protects the city's seal. The proposal is to add the new city logo, which was done in design services when we did the new website, to that ordinance, thereby putting trademark protection on it so it could not be used without the city's authorization by third-party entities, basically a housekeeping measure.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What... I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure. But what do we do? What action does the city take if a candidate produces advertising material that includes our logo? I know it's got wording in here, you know, that you, you know, nobody shall do that and it's unlawful and all that kind of stuff. But is that type of violation given to the election department? Because I know it's happened in this city before, where a candidate might inadvertently or knowingly, you know, use the city logo behind his desk or behind her chair or something like that. And it implies, you know, that the city might be endorsing that person, which is certainly wrong, and I know we all know that. But what can the city do? Do we have to go to Deborah Clark? Do we...
That would be a question that I would defer to the city attorney on, not being an attorney myself.
It depends how it's used and who's using it. If someone's using it in unauthorized manner, in an electioneering pamphlet or brochure, it might be a violation of the electioneering law. It might also be a violation of the ethics law if it's a public official or a candidate, possibly. We can also take enforcement in Circuit Court if we need to.
So the city really can't do anything? The city has to refer to another agency saying that we believe...
Well, no, we can do things. We can sue, and we can also register the trademark. I've talked to Kurt about registering the trademark, so we can sue in federal court for a federal trademark violation.
I think it is very important. I think that as our society changes, as it does, I've seen it in other communities, you know, I've seen it other places too, where I've...
You're not supposed to use it in any of your election campaign materials or any other candidate.
I know that, you know, but I have seen it.
Maybe it would be a violation of the campaign...
Even if you, for instance, go in front... Even if you're standing in front of City Hall and you're taking your picture in front of City Hall, that should not be, you know, saying that it's, you know, the city of Madeira Beach or the city of Seminole or whatever it is.
I'd have to research that. I know that people that run for Congress at least stand in front of the Capitol. So let me research that particular question.
I'm just curious.
The logo you're not supposed to use.
Okay. I think it's important to have this, though. I agree with it. I just was wondering about the, you know, punitive...
If you see any particular violations, bring them to my attention, and we'll take a look at exactly what's happened.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any more discussion? Public comment? Public comment is closed.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-10, the protection of the city logo.
Second.
City clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. I were going back to ordinance 2019-8, that's item C on the agenda. Director Portelle?
Ordinance 2019-08, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for amendment of Chapter 58, street sidewalks and other public places, Article 2, sidewalks and driveways, Section 58-32, driveways specifications, C to exclude driveway flares from measurement between a two-driveway entrance, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the purpose of this ordinance is to resolve a problem that occurs all over town. We have a lot of very small, narrow lots, and people often would like to have two separate driveways, especially given the fact that in the older areas, the houses are actually pretty close to the street. There's often not room for a long driveway to stack more than one vehicle. So people will come in with two driveways. The code currently requires that when you have two driveways, they should be separated by six feet at the curb. In a 40-foot lot, there's not room, with all of the setbacks and everything, to put six feet between them and still allow the driveway to flare. The purpose in the flare is to actually protect the curb and then also to avoid erosion. So what we're suggesting is that that six foot would be measured at the property line, and they'd be allowed to put the flare on their driveways at the end. That's the purpose, because we run into this quite a bit.
Director Portelle? I just wanted to ask, was this 2019-09 and then the next one, was it triggered by some situation or some instance that we're having right now? Or is it part of your excellent doing of redefining things and looking at our entire...
This, well, we are looking at everything, but I have been bringing things forward kind of ahead of doing the whole big review of all the setbacks and for all the districts. I've been bringing them through as they pose the most critical problems. These are things that... This comes up all the time. And quite often, what happens, people go ahead and put it in, and then we end up citing them for violation of that. And really, it's a better design to have the flares available. So we've been working with people, trying to explain they could flare on one side and have to be straight in the middle. It just... It really isn't serving any purpose for the city, especially since in a lot of cases, those aren't actually landscaped areas anyway. Thank you.
Any more discussion from the board?
I'm going to ask the stupid question because I have no idea what you're talking about. What is a driveway flare?
Oh, okay. Well, you know, at the end of your driveway, the point... Instead of the driveway going straight into the road, it...
All right, I got you. I got you.
And there's a...
I had no idea what you were talking about. Okay, I'm good.
There's a set... There's a set dimension for those. There's a standard for them. They can only be three feet wide, and they can't flare before the property line. So it's all within the right of way.
I'll open for public comment. Comments closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2019-08 on the first reading.
Second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2019-09. First reading.
Ordinance number 2019-09, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for amendment of Chapter 110, zoning, Article 6, supplementary district regulations, Division 11, Division 2, swimming pools, Section 110-721, patios, lighting, designed to include patio thickness and patios and paved decks and yards that fronts on an open water body, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this item is something we've talked about a little bit before in the floodplain ordinance. Our code does not allow pools on waterfront lots to go more than a foot above the grade. But it doesn't address patios that don't have a pool in them. And sometimes the lots are steep enough that people are coming in with proposals for patios that are five, six, seven feet in the air. So that poses a conflict with the floodplain ordinance. It doesn't allow a structure over three feet. That's a FEMA, a typical FEMA standard as well. So we wanted to make the point that the patios also need to be within a foot of grade. And, you know, we have been helping people design it in ways that slopes their grade more gracefully and supports those patios and moves toward the water more gracefully. But we do know that there are places... The other coastal cities are starting to deal with this as well, because they have had people coming in who are building huge bulkhead-type patios to be even with a house that's way up high. And so from the water, you're getting these big walls in the backyards, which is inconsistent with all of the other policies you have about maintaining views across water, towards the water, and all the other portions that deal with what can and cannot occur in the backyard. It also creates a big issue with it being structural and how much building design needs to go into it. So we wanted to clarify that this is to relate not only to pools, but also to patios.
So how high are we saying they can go up?
It's the 12 inches above grade.
Okay.
And they are allowed to move the grade and slope the grade and affect drainage and everything. The other concern about this is that it can create quite a drainage problem. You know, if you build your own yard up really high, that water's got to go somewhere. And so we are regularly in discussions with people about trying to get them... What's an appropriate way to get the water off their lot without flooding out the neighbors?
Any discussion from the board? Public comment? Public comment is closed. Any... Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2019-09, providing for amendment of Chapter 110 on first reading.
Second.
City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. By the way, we're on the last page of the agenda. And the next item is ordinance 2019-11, amendment to parking ordinance, first reading.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this. This is an amendment to the parking ordinance, first reading, and we talked about this at the April 23 workshop. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Rowan, who is our most capable parking supervisor.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Mayor. All the changes that are here are based off our discussions at the workshop, with one caveat to that being the definition of resident. In discussions with the city attorney over the last few weeks, he wanted to add... We tabled that during the work group. The city attorney wanted us to put that in there for your consideration as well. So we can talk... If you haven't read it, if you'd like to take a look at it quickly, and then we can have any discussions you guys want. The purpose is truly to clarify what a resident is, so when we're issuing the annual parking permits, that it's as clear as possible for our volunteer desk who handles that for us.
I had one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I always have one question, don't I? The resident, the definition of resident, I was wondering if we shouldn't have, instead of one, produce one of the following documents, if we shouldn't have two, like everybody else in the world has two, to identify anything, one with a picture ID and one with a... You know, just one, that could be an electric bill or a property bill or something like that, to make sure that we are, you know, that we're not being... Well, to make sure that everybody stays honest.
We do also require they bring their registration in, and that's just to help so people aren't buying, getting passes for family members that live, you know, in town someplace.
Registration for what, though?
Their vehicles.
No, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not...
I understand what you mean.
Okay.
And I'll defer a little bit here to the city attorney, because I think he could probably talk this a little better than I.
It's getting late. Maybe soon.
We have voter's registration in here. We don't have in the definition of resident, a vehicle registration. But I think somewhere else in there, do we require that?
Well, we have people bring it in.
I think they're actually asking for that now. So you could add in vehicle registration. You could also say bring in two documents if you wanted to. This is first reading, so we can add that.
I'd just like the two documents, one photo ID and one anything else that they want, because it's such a typical way of identifying, I guess, yourself as... If you think it's being too picky, I'm fine with that also. I'm just suggesting it if any other commissioner might feel it is warranted.
Generally, we... The volunteers...
Anything to make their job easier.
Right, and...
Because they are volunteers.
Right, and some have, you know, significant capabilities, others are a little more limited. So that's why we're trying to make sure we clarify this, just to make sure we make it as transparent and easy as possible for some of the folks out there. So if we want to do two, again, it's pretty flexible here, however you guys want to proceed.
I think vehicle registration is a good add-on, and then it's up to you guys whether you want the person to produce one or two of these identifications in order to get the parking permit.
I think vehicle registration, one is fine.
I agree.
It's more confined the way it is now.
I mean, Jim knows everybody becomes a vehicle. So vehicle registration would be fine if you want to ask for something else, and they only have their vehicle registration. I don't see a real big issue.
And just to highlight a couple of the other changes, most of it was just cleaning up some of the lists of the parking lots. But we limited three passes, parking passes, per dwelling. A cursory look at the database, we have about six-ish folks who have four or five vehicles, and that can be worked out on an individual basis as necessary, taking that through the city manager. But I don't think that's an issue. But just, again, to keep people from trying to incorporate family members all throughout town, and then removing the parking spot in John's Pass Village for that apartment on the second story there, and then removing the no-back-in restriction. Those are the real, probably, key highlight changes.
Brian, did we... It's probably in here, and I'm missing it. Did we change the price yet or the per-hour rate yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
We did not. That was part of the... It actually, instead of saying, "See the fee schedule," it actually listed $2 per hour. So that's one of the cleanups. So taking the $2 out and saying, "In accordance with the fee schedule."
Goodbye, ma'am.
I have one here.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we've had problems with people backing in to their parking spaces, and they get confused on it. To me, the way it's read for the Section 66-72, to me, the wording is kind of confusing. And people right now are having a hard time just seeing no backing on their ticket. Then when they start reading this, it says, "Change backing of vehicles into meter spaces is prohibited. To read vehicle backed in parking is permitted if the licensed place of the vehicle can be seen readily, observed, except if a no-back-in parking sign is posted for a particular lot or space." I think that's a lot to absorb when people can't even understand no backing.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. The purpose of that was if, at some point, we wanted to make Village Drive no-back-in just on that section. That was the purpose of that, that phrase added to the spot there. So people weren't backing in across traffic into a spot, which happens regularly down there. They'll see a spot on the opposite side, and rather than trying to take a U-turn, they'll just back in.
Public comment on this item?
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. One of those people is me. I have two scooters, one motorcycle, and two vehicles. But there's only two of us. It just depends on what we take. And like on Village Drive, the people that are riding motorcycles that weigh 150 pounds, they got to back in. It's not going to work.
Well, we added motorcycle parking spaces in John's Pass Village.
But quite often, they'll put two motorc... But quite often, they'll put two motorcycles side by side, and they need to back in, so it's pretty good.
We have not enforced ordinances on motorcycles. Having been a rider for most of my life, you can't back out of a spot if it's uphill, if you have a large motorcycle, so that's just something, because we, you just know, so, and it's readily available as well, so.
Public comment, anybody else? Public comment is closed.
I'll make a motion for us to pass ordinance 2019-11 on the first reading.
Second.
Will city clerk, please call the roll?
I want to read the ordinance. Title first.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2019-11, and ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending city code, chapter 66, article 3, division 2, providing for parking regulations, providing for parking fees, providing for parking permits, providing effective dates, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict. Commissioner Weinstein? I meant Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance 2019-12, Sea Turtle ordinance.
Order number 2019-12, and ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Pine Ellis County, Florida, providing for amendment to the code of ordinances, amending chapter 110 zoning, article 6 supplementary district regulations, division 5 glare and lighting, section 110-501, updating purpose to include information about nesting and hatchlings, and include federal regulated lights, section 110-502, to include definitions, section 110-503, referring to protection for property owners, section 110-504, indicating general standards within sea turtle conservation zone, section 110-505, describing full lighting standards within the sea turtle conservation zone, section 110-506, addressing publicly owned lighting in the beach area, and section 110-507, addressing temporary lighting standards, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, it's that time of the year where we start concerning ourselves with the well-being of the sea turtles. And one of the things we've looked at this year is that our existing ordinance is actually kind of behind the times and very inadequate in regards to providing clarity and authority, and also even protection and some standards as to how we can go about protecting the sea turtles. We've worked extensively with the code enforcement and the sheriff's office, and also the Sea Turtle Conservancy Group, and have looked at ordinance language that they proposed, and that also looked at ordinances from around the state, and are proposing these updates based on that information. And we've had quite a bit of support from them as well, and that's been a big help. We had to provide a purpose statement, because we have a lot of regulations that don't necessarily say what the intent of the code was to begin with, and that's very important later if you get into situations where they need to be interpreted. We needed to update definitions, because there are all kinds of things in the regulation that actually were not defined, in terms, you know, what's acceptable type lighting, what is sea turtle lighting, that sort of thing. And then, we've added very specific standards, and the purpose in that is that we have ordinances in place right now that provide that they can protect the sea turtles by turning the lights off all the way, and during certain times of the year. But we didn't have exact standards for, well, if you do want to use lights, what kind of lights would be acceptable, and what works. And there are a lot of them out there, they have very clear standards as to what would work. So, the intent here is to give people an option to continue using lighting during sea turtle, but to tell them exactly how that should operate. It also is intended to effectively establish a zone for sea turtle lighting. There were a lot of hatchlings lost, slash hundreds of hatchlings, and they were found on the opposite side of Gulf Boulevard. They're still heading for lights that's being shown from the opposite side of Gulf Boulevard, because, you know, as long as there's space between buildings, some light's gonna come through, and they're gonna follow those lights. So, what's being proposed here is that there's a zone of effect area, anything on both sides of Gulf that shines out onto the beach, should you use the sea turtle protection lighting or practices of turning off the lights during sea turtle season, when it's dark. And we've addressed it very specifically about what sides of the building, so if you're, if the building is facing away from the beach, you don't have to adhere to these kind of standards, because you don't want to be too restrictive. It needs to be tied specifically to the benefit you're attempting to accomplish. So, we've gone through this in great detail, as I said, proposed the measurements that are going to be used for those lights, have gone through the building codes that are associated with these, and put in the parts and pieces that are needed to explain to people what their options are. Again, if people are not making improvements to the property, they can continue as they are, they would just turn their lights off, but if they do come in for upgrades or improvements, and we'll expect them to use fixtures and standards in keeping with the code, just as you would updating any kind of building. The other thing I wanted to note was that current practice is that lights would need to be turned off from 10 o'clock until basically dawn, and the Sea Turtle Conservancy recommended that that be from sunset to sunup, which is a more rational standard, because if it's dark that causes the problem and the light shining through, sea turtles don't know what time it is. So, if it's dark at 8 o'clock, they're still as confused by the light as if it's 10. So, it should be, the standard should be associated with the effect that is the dark and the light. So, they have recommended that sunup to sundown, and that's included in here as part of the planning commission recommendation for enhancement to the code.
Public comment is closed. Any discussion?
It's a great initiative, and I'm glad that you've changed and amended the ordinances. I hope all the little turtles appreciate it. Where did you say that you got the, what document did you use to revise it? Did we make up our own, or did we have it? And the reason I'm asking you, Lynda, is that next month at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning, they wanted, I told him that we were having this on our agenda for tonight, and so Brian Ellis from that division asked me if, you know, where we adopted or where we developed our ordinance from.
Okay. We did rely heavily on the Sea Turtle Conservancy recommendations, their standards, their guidelines.
Okay.
And then, we also reviewed how they were applied, and walked through them, and how we would do it permitting-wise. A lot of times, conservancy groups are very strict, and they give you the highest possible standard, but they are never in the position of actually having to regulate and apply the standards. So, we walked back through that, checked with other cities that have been successful in not only implementing but defending these. So, I can direct him to our full list of sources.
Good.
And I'll be glad to make contact.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-12 on first reading.
Second.
Will city clerk, please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And last on the agenda is reports and correspondence, anything from the city commission?
We have to go back to the fee ordinance.
Well, actually, aren't we supposed, well, Scott Anderson isn't here, so that one's off the.
Unless it's, I know we've had staff that's been here the entire day, that have been waiting for this particular item. There's certain things that we can discuss and prove, and then, of course, you'll see it again in second reading, but it is the pleasure of the board as to how you wish to proceed.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Ordinance 2009-06, and ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fees and collections procedures, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, if I could direct you through this, as you know, I had to go back out and try to find the pieces and put it all together. And the portion up front for the clerk's office, the most updated version of that is in the version that you received in your packet. I didn't want to take the risk of rearranging that by carrying it over into this new document. So, if you have any questions about the clerk's section, hers is mostly very strictly required language, explaining the costs associated with public information requests and procedures.
Yes, thank you, Lynda.
And then, we did go over most of this in workshop setting earlier in the year in March, I think, and there are very few changes added onto that since then. There, if I could draw your attention to, unless you have questions about the clerk's section, the next section is development services, and I can address that. I did a little bit of reorganization in the development services section under, on page 31, it's 31 of 10, on are, I'm not taking the doggy dining out of there, but I'm reorganizing to put it under specific site plan applications, because we have other things we noticed that we aren't paying, we were charging no fees for at all, although they sometimes take a whole lot of staff time in review. So, the doggy dining gets moved under there, it's not being changed, but we have no individual permitting process for many things that come in separately. If they're not part of a development plan, a bigger one, then we didn't have any fee or process for reviewing them, and that includes signs, murals, banners, tanks, driveways, patios, pools, the pervious surface ratio and landscaping. And sometimes people will bring in just plans for those items, and we had no way of charging for time, and it does actually take quite a bit of time. We always end up with meeting with somebody to go over their plan and help them, especially on these small things, help them work out the details and figure out how to use the code. So, those charges were added in. And as with the special magistrate, which we had discussed before, what I've done is gone back through the review of our hours, the amount of time that we spend on particular type projects to come up with these fees, based on how much time it usually is taking us. Once these are in place, we'll continue to monitor through the year, so that each year we have a clear sense of how much time is really required. The other department heads, I think Jay is here, there were some changes he wanted to address, and there's some parking changes, and Walt is here, and I think there's some things the city manager may want to address as well.
Lynda, I've got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Last night at the planning session, you said we are collecting impact fees. It's exactly what you said, but I don't see a fee schedule in here for this, and talking to the finance director this morning, he said he has not seen any impact fees come in. So, where are these?
We are collecting impact fees, we're in the process of collecting for town center and for Holiday Isle, because they're specifically outlined in their development agreements, exactly what they have to pay, and then how we have to account for those. We are obligated, when we have a county road or any kind of county facility other than sewer and water, because they do those separately, but if there were a county road impact, we would have to collect and then provide them with, provide it to the county. The thing is that really, since Walt and I have been here, we haven't actually processed anything big that would have required any impact fees. So, because, other than obviously the town center and Holiday Isle, and everything that's been built over the years has been PD, and each of the PDs has a list of what the impact fees are for that particular project, the, both the state, the county, and actually the city, the way the law works, you would give people credit for any kind of impact that they were already paying on a building. So, if you take down a house, you put up a new house, you're assumed to have credit for whatever impacts were already associated with the previous house. So, it may be why in the past, you hadn't seen any impact. The county doesn't have a lot of roads running through us, really, we're dealing with water and sewer, they collect those themselves. So, the main impact has been on state roads. What we want to do, though, with the impact fee, is list out a full mobility element of all kinds of things, other than just roads, and have local impacts and rec impacts and everything else, then we'd definitely be able to.
Well, as you said, you were working with University of Florida, so where are we at on getting those impact fees?
Right.
Because, you know, I've talked to a couple of the cities, and they have impact fees for the rec department. Two more people moving to town, they're going to use their recreation facilities, the fields, whatever, or charts, or percentage, based on that. Where are we at with coming up with something like that?
We have been working with them to specify the scope of services for the contract, but we've already begun the work. I've been providing them with research and background on what our current rates are, the mobility element, we've been reviewing that. So, we've already begun working, doing the background work. So, it should turn around pretty quick, and their timeline for proposing draft documents is actually quite aggressive, because the timeline they propose is to have something back to us in July.
Okay, you said something a minute ago, I've kind of lost myself.
Turn your mic on, please. I'm sorry. It won't happen again, Kurt. Yes, it will, but that's okay. You said if it's a county road or a state road, that works different. So, like, for the condominiums that are approved on Tom Stewart, that's, how will those fees work?
Right.
Because, you know, does the county assess those fees?
No, those are gonna be assessed by the state.
By the state.
We will actually be collecting them, and they have deals written into the development agreement as to how that money is applied. And in the case of the two big developments out there, they have to make roadway improvements along Tom Stewart, and they get, the amount of impact fee that they have to pay, those roadway improvements get credited towards that.
But the city will not be making any, receiving any impact fees?
No.
For the rec department or anything else?
No.
With these projects?
That's because they were already under contract, correct? So, even if we were to put our development agreement, or, excuse me, even if we were to put our impact fee ordinance in place now, we would not be to put our impact fee ordinance in place now, we would not be able, by law, to go back and charge impact fees?
Yeah.
And, you know, it's definitely an issue. I mean, I even had the discussion with the auditor today. I mean, he's been associated with the city for almost eight or nine, off and on, eight or nine years. We haven't collected anything.
But the second part of this is, I think, if I remember correctly, somewhere I saw the city had impact fees back in '07, '06, whatever.
Go a long way back.
But they stopped them when '08 came and the recession came. You know, it shouldn't have been, hey, they're going forever, we still have them, you know, you know, when the recession kind of stopped in '11, you know, they should have automatically re-energized, you know? So I guess, and I'm asking, I've asked the City Clerk to kind of check that out for me, because I know at one time the city did have impact fees, but I think most towns up and down the beach, all kind of, okay, we're not going to charge impact fees, because we want builders to come, when the recession hit.
You know, and the county...
But it wasn't like it for everything.
The county will collect impact fees for the unincorporated, but for the cities and towns, they leave it up to the cities and towns to collect, and then remit half of the collection to them. Now, you can also deduct administrative fees, too, but, like, you know, I just have not seen it.
But Madam Mayor, also, if I may, there's been changes in state statutes as well that has changed the way in which impact fees are determined and levied, and how local governments handle that. Because of the recession, the building community and the developers lobbied Tallahassee, and obviously their lobby is a lot stronger to say that these cities are utilizing the impact fees for X, Y, and Z, and it's nothing to do with the impact of my development. So the whole impact fee process since 2008 to now is profoundly different. And I think that's where the challenge that we have now, that it requires us to have a study, that we have to go through all this process. But to your point, Commissioner, certainly we want to look at fire services, recreational services, general government, infrastructure, all those different things for fees that we levy, but the law requires us that we have to have a study that justifies the means to be able to charge for that.
If that's the case, then I don't understand how Indian Rocks Beach, most of their impact fees is based on the county impact fees. Most of their impact.
There's the multimodal, which we have, which we have an agreement with the county, and cities and towns on this beach are, along this beach are collecting on that. We're not.
And I've got copies of that multimodal. You know, why aren't we doing this? This is what I'm trying to ask. You know, personally, I just think everything should come to a screeching halt until we get these fees in. It's fair to the residents, it's fair to the developers. So the developer comes in, he knows what he's going to be paying, and right now, everything is on the back of the residents and not on the back of the developer. You know, just like Linda just said, hey, when they build those condos on Tom Stewart, yeah, the county's going to collect money for what they want. Or is the city making anything? Is the city being helped with the Recreation Department or anything else? No. You know, so basically, everything is on the back of the residents to carry those fees, and not on the developer who is making a ton of money. And I think it should be fair across the board. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, and we can bring back, as the Board requested at your next workshop, we can give you a status update and see if the individual that's heading the study can provide us an update as to where we are. But to Director Portell's point is that they're looking to move on this pretty aggressively. And so once we get it back and it gets adopted by the Board, we have the ability to move forward. If I'm not mistaken, also in the fee ordinance, it gives us the opportunity that in the event that the study is adopted by the Board, the information that's contained in the study automatically takes a place into the fee ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, there's language in there. For the impact fees, you're going to need more than just the fee ordinance. You need to have dual rational nexus tests. We could adopt something like Indian Rocks Beach ordinance, but it does amend the Land Development Code and then other sections of the code. It's more than just a fee schedule. Right, but we did put some language in there that allows for that, once we've come to that, the conclusion of the study, and then we have the factual basis and the preponderance of evidence to effectively levy that fee, that it can be a document that that information can be inserted into the fee ordinance. So we've already kind of preempted, you know, being prepared for when that study's completed.
And we did ask, as part of the services, to include whatever crossover within the comp plan and with the land development regulations, whatever accompanying amendments need to go with this will also be prepared, so we can move forward with those at the same time.
No, because I know in the comp plan, it doesn't say we can collect impact fees. It says we shall collect impact fees. Big difference in wording, you know, and we haven't been doing it since 2011. That's eight or nine years. The city and the residents, they're carrying everything on their back, and that's what bothers me.
I worked for Indian Shores... Right after the recession, and they collected one year, $200,000. I know, because I processed it. That was after the recession.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to move forward as quickly as possible, but thank you very much. Thank you.
I got a quick question. Jay, looking at page 23 of 31, I may have asked this before, I'm kind of throwing a blank, though, but what is this alcohol event management fee?
Good evening. That's a fee that we essentially, we were asked to look into either serving alcohol at events that were on property or charging for events that were serving alcohol. We kind of found a middle area for that. So if there's a special event, I guess there was a desire at one point to have us step in to serve. If there's an event of any kind on the property, whether it's a concert, or whether it's the king of the beach, or anything else, there was a notion to have us, it's the first right of refusal for alcohol for those events, to have the city staff, Recreation Department take care of that. In lieu of additional training and all this other unnecessary steps I felt that we would have to take, we came across and created this fee. Basically, too, and the numbers based on that is, if it's, you know, 500 people in attendance, there's a lot of extra legwork that we have to do with the event application to get it around the correct departments, to make sure that we review the process correctly. And then as the event gets larger, there's more staff time and more hours taken to basically ensure that they're doing this properly. And then the last one is, if the event chooses not to, then we have first right of refusal, whether staff does it or we get a nonprofit to do it. It's just, it's basically a fee to handle our staff time and also to ensure that, you know, the city's taking the risk, so there's kind of a...
Well, I don't mind the last part. I think the last part's probably a pretty cool idea. I'm not real comfortable with the first three, only because, I mean, you know, maybe this goes back to impact fees, John, I don't know, but my feeling is if we are providing, if we're charging a fee, an alcohol event management fee, are we assuming risk? I mean, that, to me, seems like we're telling them they're allowed to serve alcohol. I know they have to go to Tampa and get their own alcohol permit, but this, to me, would seem like we are giving them the right to sell alcohol on our premises. And does that make us liable? Ralph, maybe that's a question for you, but I don't like this at all. I think it's a terrible fee.
And to be totally honest, it was kicked around a lot, I think every conversation I had, whether we charged a fee or not, we assume risk by allowing it on property. And that's part of the insurance policy that we require for all the events, to be the additionally insured, so...
Right. No, I got where you're going with it. I just, I don't like, I don't think it's a necessary fee that we should be levying on people. I mean, maybe change the, you know, we could recoup this money somewhere else or in certain areas, in my opinion, we could. Instead, I just don't like the, I just don't like the word alcohol event management fee. I just don't like how it's phrased.
Okay. Do we want to cover the, our other changes? I only have two changes to look at, and it's actually on that same page, if you guys are at 23 of 31 in that new booklet. We have the road closure fee that's set at $1,000. Since that's been set, it has essentially become a deterrent, more so than anything else. Our recommendation is that we just ensure that when we do these events, whether it's on Madeira Way or seafood festivals, essentially the only one that's paying it. The Madeira Way events were done on our own, so it was just a staff time thing. We've had other people inquire about events, and then I mention that fee, and they just walk away. So the thought on this is to ensure that, yes, there's a road closure fee, but we just be more clear that that fee is to track our hard costs better, and that's essentially just staff time. So if it takes two hours to close the road and it takes two people, two hours, then we'll charge for those two people for those two hours. But there's no reason for us to charge $1,000. Essentially, too, you know, when we had the market here before on Wednesday, we dropped the cones off on a Wednesday morning, they set them up, they broke them down, they put everything back where it was going, it didn't require staff time. Once you essentially put a proper MOT plan into place, you should be able to hand it to anybody and have them do it properly, as long as we have walked them through the first few times. So that road closure fee really is, like I said, it's a deterrent, so I was just going to have us strike that and just add language that says that we'll properly bill for staff time.
Off of the subject a little bit, on that road closure, I talked to Jay about it, and he said there's nothing we can do. But when they close Madeira Way for, you know, the market thing, I've sat on my porch, and I've probably seen close to 50 accidents where people try to start to turn down Madeira Way, and all of a sudden, they realize the road's closed, and they pull back out into traffic, and you hear people hitting the brakes and screeching, trying to go around them and stuff like that. So I said, can we put a sign up in that turn lane that the turn lane is closed? And Jay said, we cannot do that. You know, so I don't know if we need to move the events off of Madeira Way to overhear somewhere. I don't know, but somebody's going to get killed one of these days trying to make that turn and pull back out when they realize they can't turn. So it's very serious, and I think it's a major safety issue. Off of the subject of fees, I apologize.
Yeah, we can certainly look into some alternatives. Madam Mayor, if I may, one other thing that's not included in the fee ordinance, but has been a topic of discussion with staff internally, and then this can be discussed when we bring it back in second reading, is the use of some of our facilities for the card players and the demands on the room and the scheduling of the room or what have you. And currently, there's no fee that's being levied for certain entities to come in and utilize the space, and it is very uncommon in the recreation industry to have a space where there is no, you know, there's AC, there's electric, there's costs that are being incurred, plus there's, they bring in some alcoholic beverages and et cetera. And so one of the things that we wanted to see, and we can bring back some options for the Board to consider at second reading, is how we would like to handle that, because they are occupying the space. It's also impacting the ability for recreational programs, and one of the things that the Department Director has been tasked with is finding every way to generate revenue to effectively reduce the subsidy to the general fund, from the general fund. So those are some things that, you know, we don't have to get into more detail, we just wanted to hear if the Board is interested in us bringing back some solutions concerning the use of the space.
I definitely think it's a good idea, because you go to any condominiums, you go to the library, you go anywhere, and they're charging for the use of it. And I think that we are accepting some kind of liability, you know, I mean, everybody is, we live in such a litigious suing society. I think that when you bring, you know, you could just bring a bottle of wine or something, but you shouldn't bring it onto city property. I mean, it's just, it's just, no, you just shouldn't, you know, it's a, and we should, but we should charge for the use of the room. But I think that there should be requirements or, you know, prohibitions against certain gambling, for instance, you know? I mean, I don't care if it's penny ante, I know it's, you know, a small amount, but still, it should not be done, I don't think, in City Hall.
Yeah, I agree, we should bring it back.
I think we should bring it back, too, yeah. Please do.
Agreed.
Public comment on this item?
We ask for clarification on that road closure, deleting the $1,000 road closure fee that Jay was just discussing? He was proposing eliminating the charge of $1,000 for each road closing, because it just really doesn't require that much.
What, Director Hatch, was it going to be that you would charge the cost?
Correct. Yeah, 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 it's not eliminating the fee, it was just we would charge the actual hard cost of the road closure.
Places like Madeira Way, when they have their market, you know, that's very minimal there.
I guess I like leaving it at $1,000. Where did you get the $1,000 from? I mean, how long have we been doing the $1,000?
It's been within the last year. To be honest, it was a number, when it was initially put in place, it was after an event where the commission at the time had no interest in ever shutting the road down again. So it was, let's throw a high number out there and use it as a deterrent, and, I mean, if we want to continue to use it as a deterrent, it's working, but...
What do other beach cities, do you know what other beach cities around here charge for that type of...
I can look into it.
They don't get it, because they do charge.
Well, I mean, a lot of these, a lot of other cities also co-sponsored these events, and that's kind of how we got away with the market. We staffed it, and then we had to, you know, we took the revenue from the market. So at that point, we're covering our staff time, and then the developers over there, they paid the difference as we got the market going. The market is a whole nother conversation we've got to get into. We've got a group looking to take it over for us and eliminate some costs, but this $1,000 fee would be something that we would have to essentially waive every week if we were looking to do this, to make it work. So, and that's where I'm looking for staff time. You know, if we're just, like, when we put together the fee, the total number of staff hours that we used for the market the first couple of times, we came to $400 to $500. So there's a $500 fluff amount there that we're just, I can't confidently back up unless we just say it's a convenience fee. So that's kind of where we backed into this.
You made a remark that the seafood festival was the only one that paid that fee, right?
They paid it, and based on the amount of cones and staffing and everything else, it was, it made sense.
Public comment?
Robert Preston, 425, South Bay Shore. Jay just had one comment. So you said people that came up, they'd look at the $1,000 fee and turn around and leave, right? So if you tell them, well, it's the hard cost, there ought to be something that says not to exceed or something, because, well, what is the hard cost?
A hard cost for a road closure essentially is the staff time.
Right, but there's no dollar value associated with, this is the maximum amount, this is the maximum amount that you would probably pay in hard cost. It would be $200, or it would be $175, but there's nothing there that tells them what that hard cost might be. You just say hard cost.
Yeah, in our other section, we have a staffing fee for, like, our fields and everything and for our rentals, we charge 25 an hour for non-resident and 20 an hour for resident. So it's, it would be concurrent with that.
Again, but you're just telling them $25 an hour, you're not telling them how long it usually is to set up?
We would provide that in a, anytime we do a quote for a road closure, it's essentially, it takes about two hours to close or open it, and then two hours to close it, we allow that freedom on both ends.
A hundred bucks or so, but if you just say hard cost without, like, if I wanted to do it, I just didn't know how I would determine what those hard costs would be other than 25 bucks an hour. How many hours of 25 bucks an hour would I was getting?
Wouldn't that be in the contract that you're writing with them?
Yes.
So they would have it in their contract, how much it's going to cost them.
Public comment is closed. Any more discussion?
No, I like leaving it in there.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we go home.
So Jay, what you're really looking for, to find out, do we want you to keep the $1,000 fee in there or take it out? Is that what you're looking for?
Correct. Or, yeah, if we take it out, then I would replace it with correct language to-
And then again, it'd be according to the application, when you fill out the application, whether or not you're going to charge a little bit extra for a road closure?
Correct.
Okay, so it'd be up to your discretion. Okay.
And if I may, we'd be looking for a motion to include that in the full motion and the fee ordinance altogether.
Just trying to think of a way to word it. You what? Trying to think of a way to word it, the motion. All right, let's see, I'll make a motion to eliminate the $1,000 road closure, based on the situation in the application, something like that.
Well, then you're not making a motion to accept the fee ordinance for the first reading. You have to say, make a motion to accept the fee ordinance with the first reading with the following changes.
Okay, you just said it.
You can say-
Go ahead.
Somebody make the motion.
So make a motion to accept the reading of the first reading of the fee ordinance with the changes that we discussed with the road closure at this time.
To approve.
To approve. As proposed.
Second.
It's a long night, losing words.
Any other discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And really, lastly, are the reports and correspondence, anything from the city commission? City attorney?
Not at this time.
City manager?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to bring a proclamation before the board at your next regular meeting, recognizing W.D. Higginbothan, he passed away towards the end of April with complications associated with lung cancer. So he served here as the city manager for a couple of years, so I'd like to bring a proclamation forward for the board to consider and then get it to his family. That concludes my report.
And city clerk, any reports or correspondence?
Would like to say, with all the problems that we had last week with the agenda and all, it went, it went real good tonight, and, you know, despite the flaws we had with the server and all, and, but we got it out.
All right. There being no further business, we adjourned at 10:57.